I will call the Planning Commission hearing for Wednesday, April 22, 2020, to order. It is 6:00 PM. We have several items on the agenda tonight. There were originally eight, and we have five that we'll be hearing this evening. All those agenda items marked with an asterisk are legislative, and the Planning Commission will be making recommendations to municipal council, who must approve or disapprove those items. And the items that do not have an asterisk are administrative, and the Planning Commission will be making a decision on those items. For those public members, or those members of the public who would like to participate this evening, participation is available. Members of the public can participate by typing a comment during the YouTube livestream of this hearing. Please identify if you want your comment to be read aloud. Only one comment per person, and include the item number, your name, and city at the beginning of your comment. Each comment will be read for approximately two minutes as time allows. Please note that if you've already emailed your comments, those have been read by the Planning Commission members, and you don't need to comment again. And we have received quite a few comments on item six for this evening. And we have all read those in advance of the hearing. I'll have further instructions when we get to the public comment portion of each item on how you can actually dial in to participate at that time, but there will be dial-in participation available also. So with no further ado, I will ask for roll call, and Commissioners, please state your name and whether you have any conflicts of interest on this evening's items. And I'll start with you, Mr. Anderson.
Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Thank you. Ms. Wynden?
No conflicts. Maria Wynden, no conflicts, but I do want to add for the record that I do live in the Mazor neighborhood, where the item for discussion, item number six, will be taking place, but I have no conflicts with this item.
Great, thank you. Ms. Urquaga?
Laurie Urquaga, I have no conflicts.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Thank you. And I'm Deborah Jensen, and I have no conflicts as well. And did I miss anyone? That's all Commissioners. Fantastic. All right. Item one on our agenda this evening.
Deborah, this is Robert Mills. Robert Knudsen is here with us.
Oh, great. Mr. Knudsen, do you have any conflicts of interest this evening?
No, no conflicts of interest.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Item one is legislative, so we will be making a recommendation to municipal council. The Provo City Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance amendment to Section 15.20.090 of the Provo City Code relating to parking lot landscaping. The request seeks to increase the minimum canopy coverage and landscaping arrangement within new parking areas. This will have citywide application, and item one will be presented by Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Planning Commission members. This is Austin Taylor. So this item would seek to increase the minimum required tree canopy coverage of parking lots, and it's something that is coming back to you again after some refining of the proposal. So I'll go through this presentation and talk to you as well about some changes that we've made to the proposal.
Great.
So the reasoning behind this is that we found this heat island map of Provo, and if you look at where some of the hottest areas are, the deepest red, those are areas where there's lots of asphalt, lots of concrete. It absorbs the heat, and it keeps it throughout the day and throughout the night. So areas with lots of trees, like Joaquin neighborhood, or like BYU, Mazor, those are generally about 10 degrees cooler, and we'd like to see the same effect in areas that don't currently have that. So the current code for parking lot landscaping says that there needs to be 40 feet of landscaping per parking stall, and that the tree canopy coverage has to be 25% at maturity. And then it's a little bit difficult to, it's complicated to understand how many trees exactly it's asking for, because it says you need one tree per 120 square feet of parking lot landscaping, and then you need a certain number of parking lot landscaping per stall, and then a percentage of that has to be on the interior. And then it requires, turn the video on, okay. I've been asked to turn the video on. Okay. And then concrete curbs are required around all landscaping, so that prevents the water from coming into the landscaping, which is something we don't want. And then, this is the kind of parking lot that we get. This was, this is the Vanderhall Motors parking lot. This was built just a few years ago, and it has concrete curving around the landscaping, and it has a pretty minimal amount of trees. This is what the code produces. So the general plan says that we should be having more trees in parking lots. We should have higher minimum landscaping, higher tree density requirements for development. And then this is what the new proposed code would have, and it would clarify the number of parking, or the number of trees. So the code that I showed you before that we have now says that you need a certain number of square feet per parking space, and then a certain number of trees per square footage of landscaping. This just says one tree per four parking spaces. It increases the minimum required tree canopy coverage from 25% to 50%, and instead of saying at maturity, it says at 20 years of planting to make it a bit more specific. And it removes that requirement to have curves around the landscaping. So what that does is when stormwater hits, then it can run into the landscaping, which is good, is something we want. We want the water to be absorbed by the plants. It makes, it says that the landscaping has to be concave in shape for drainage, so that it absorbs that water. And this is one new thing as well, that developers who are building in well-protection zones where drainage into the water table is not allowed by the Public Works Department, they can substitute a percentage of the required trees with bioswales, rain gardens, because they won't be allowed to have drainage into the soaping. And then it also adds a new type of landscaping shape. So these three images on the bottom of the slide, so the two on the left are currently allowed, and it would add this option for landscaping diamonds. And with that, you can fit more parking spaces in a smaller amount of land. This is something that BYU has been doing recently, and it's worked out well. I'll show you an example of that later on. So here's the exact text that's all in your packets. And I'll be showing you the trees that are allowed in this code. We did, we did increase it. I think before there was 13 trees that were allowed, now there are 19. And you had talked, you had concerns about some trees that were dirty. You said that they would, they shed pollen, they shed flowers, they shed things onto cars that you didn't want. So I'll highlight those in this next, in these trees. So these first two are the ones that, that the city forester Chaz Addis said have the potential to be dirtier. It's the streetkeeper honey locust and the shade master honey locust. And then the rest of them, he said, he doesn't see them as, as dirty. There's the English Hawthorn, the golden rain tree, flower and choke cherry, green bay zelkova, Michelle Shinno zelkova, lace bark elm, little leaf linden, silver linden, European beech, high color beech, common hackberry, mountain ash, a variety of elms. And all these elms were added later as well. So all of these tree recommendations come from, first, the city forester, who maintains all the street trees and all the public trees, and knows what grows well here in our climate, and knows what is, is not susceptible to disease. And we also got recommendations from Austin Corey, who is a planner for Provo City. He's a landscape architect as well. He recommended these elm species that, that we added later on. So next, I'll show you some examples of parking lots nearby that have good tree canopy coverage. This is one in downtown Salt Lake City that's reached 50%, and the ratio of trees to parking spaces here is one tree per four parking spaces. And it's, it's really beautiful. It looks like a parking forest rather than a parking lot. This is another one in downtown Salt Lake City. That's also a one tree per four parking spaces. It hasn't reached 50% yet, but it'll get there, just as the one before it has. This is a view of it from the outside. Here's the parking lot at OC Tanner in Salt Lake City, which as well has trees that are growing really well. This is one of our best examples in Provo. This is the BYU Museum of Art, and that one's closer to 30% tree canopy coverage, and they're using those planter diamonds that, that we'd like to make legal. And here's another example of, of a parking lot that, that would be legal under this current code right now. So it doesn't have that concrete curving that is required by code. And so what that allows is, is the rain hits, it can go into the landscaping. This also demonstrates localscaping or xeriscaping, because it has a lot of rock and a lot of native plants, and this code would make that legal. It would require only 30% ground coverage of plants and more, more rocks, more gravel. And here's some examples of trees that are doing very well in Provo over time, just proving that we can get good tree canopy coverage if we plant trees and give them time. Okay. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I was just wondering if, if you could just explain a little bit more for my benefit how developers would be allowed to substitute trees with landscape stormwater control features. I just, I just need more clarification for that, just from my understanding.
So this is a recommendation from Rob Hunter of Public Works using the stormwater division. And he came to me probably three weeks ago, and he, his department just came out with a new, it's low-impact development standard. And what they're hoping for, and what the state's hoping for as well, the state is pushing them on this, is that when, when developers build something, that more of the rainwater that falls on site will be infiltrated around. But in certain areas, that's not something that they want, because we have wells that drop full of area water around here. And so in the areas that are called well-protection zones, where they don't want infiltration, the developer could instead, underneath the parking lot, they could lay a sheet of impermeable plastic liner. And then as the rain filters through the rain garden, it'll hit the liner and then go into the stormwater pipes, kind of like it normally does already. So, and, and if the developer were to have more trees, Rob thinks that it could penetrate the liner, and then water could be going through. And so what, what he suggests is that we allow them to substitute up to 50% of their required trees with those rain gardens or those bioswales instead. And so it still gives us the, the cooling effect, because it's plants, but it makes sure that polluted water isn't going into the well-protection zones.
How many parking lots do you think this would impact?
So this is just for new parking lots with more than five parking spaces?
Correct.
Not existing lots?
I understand that. But, uh, just, like, do you think that would be like 25% of new parking, parking lots, or?
Do you mean, what percentage are in the well-protection zones, or will be in the well-protection zones?
Yes.
Yeah. A lot of those are in highly residential areas where they're not going to have large parking lots. Most of them are up on the east bench or in agricultural areas of West Provo. Most of, most of the flat downtown area with, where the grid system is for the streets is not in the well-protection zone, and that's where a lot of businesses with larger parking lots are. So I don't think that you're going to see a lot of parking lots that have to substitute.
Okay. Is a substitution allowed only in those areas where the wells are?
Yes, should be.
Okay. And are there planting standards for the bioswales?
Yeah, that's in Rob Hunter's low-impact development standard.
Great, thank you.
I've got a question about the city's requirements for public rights of way and the type of tree coverage that we require there, like maybe minimum tree spacing, different things like that.
On, on streets, like in the park strip?
Correct, yeah.
So, I know in the downtown, there's a street spacing, a standard tree spacing. Here. But at least in the downtown zone, there is a standard of 25 feet of spacing between trees, and that's in the park strip.
Is that a minimum or a maximum?
I believe it's a maximum.
But when properties develop elsewhere in the city, there's not necessarily a requirement? Or do we focus on a type of tree that people place there? And I'm simply asking from the perspective of, that's a wonderful opportunity to, to address heat island concerns, to beautify the community and so forth, particularly if shade trees are being used in those types of environments?
Yeah. I, I don't know that there's a standard in park strips outside of the downtown area on spacing and how many trees there, there have to be. But I do know that the city has a budget of $60,000 a year that it spends on new trees in public areas. And the Provo Power Forester Chaz Addis and his crew are always planting new trees in park strips when they see vacancies. So it is, it is something that the city does focus on.
So for example, this is going back 20 years, but once upon a time, when a developer developed in Provo, they paid Provo City for street trees, and then Provo City staff installed those street trees. Does that still happen?
Yeah, we still do that.
Okay. Yeah, I really appreciate the concept in terms of best practices, particularly with the low-impact development design types of things. I've seen some great examples of different types of designs that, that do allow for really significant water infiltration in areas where there is a lot of hardscape. But I don't think I've ever seen an area where there's, you know, where somebody's suggesting that it's a, it's a good model to follow, where there isn't a protected edge provided for asphalt, and where there's not a raised barrier, like a raised curb, at least in part around landscaped areas and parking areas. What I've read suggests that when you don't do that, vehicles end up in the landscaping, they end up in the tree wells, they end up compressing soils, doing different things like that to where water no longer infiltrates, to where trees don't grow as well. Trees get hit, different things like that. So that's one concern, I guess, that I have with the idea of not, not having a particular kind of design to protect the landscaped area, to make sure that vehicles aren't, aren't impacting that. I've seen a lot of great examples where simply there are inlets provided into the, the landscaped areas. And, and for example, parking lots, I've seen it as well just into storage basins and park strips adjacent to streets, to where, again, you have, you have a raised curve that keeps vehicles where you want vehicles, but water can still infiltrate the areas where you want that to happen in, and it seems to work really, really well. Also, it seems like, in my experience at least, where you don't have a protected edge to asphalt, it does not wear well over time. It alligators, cracks, crumbles, and so forth, if you don't have something there to, to protect that edge. So that, I guess, is my concern with what's being proposed, and it'd be pretty easy to change. But for example, I, I don't necessarily think this is a, is a really good example to use. If you're suggesting that, you know, somebody came along and they built a, a 50-lot parking lot in a retail environment, that's going to be very distinct in terms of how people navigate it and so forth than they would a, a trailhead park like this.
Yeah, so they, they can also, the code doesn't prohibit them from using curbs as well. If they wanted to, they could do it. And there's also the option of wheel stops, which do allow water to flow underneath them and into the landscaping. And it does stop the car from going into the landscaping. So those are options as well.
I think, I think cheap developers will gravitate towards that, absolutely. And I don't think over time that that's going to serve anybody very well.
I appreciate that comment, Dave. I, I think you're right on target. A lot of parking regulations or parking lot regulations do provide, like, that's a good case that's on the screen right now of no, no curb whatsoever. But a lot of them require the curb, but they have the parking lot graded for drainage so that it directs the water to the inlets that go into the planters. And those seem to be more sturdy over time, kind of give a more finished look, especially in an urban area.
So Dave, what you're saying is you would like the code to, to read with the best-case scenario, so that people don't defer to what's cheapest and easiest?
Yeah, I simply would say, in fact, I think it's important that we require people to utilize onsite infiltration every place that you can. So maybe for me, it'd be more a matter of leaving the curb requirement in place, but requiring people, like Deborah said, to design the parking area. but requiring people like Deborah said, to design the parking area so that drainage flows into, um, the, uh, the parking areas. And we looked at the diamond shapes in the parking lots or maybe the more linear things as parking islands or those types of things. So maybe to try to describe it a little bit differently, if you have, um, two parking stalls end to end, those are going to be about thirty-six feet long. Maybe in the middle of those, you might have a twelve inch gap in the curb and that's where water can flow into the, into the, the island, water in the tree, be filtered, uh, be stored, different things like that. But you'd still have that curb around it to protect that area. Um, I think it's particularly important when it comes to, you know, the winter months when you're plowing snow and different things like that. Um, uh, folks that do that for a living, I, I, I just don't think the landscaping in a parking lot is going to fare very well. Particularly if we're talking about the kind of density that we are here of, you know, those landscape spaces.
So one example of an, of a street locally that doesn't have curves but allows the, the water directly to infiltrate the landscaping is the, um, one hundred south, just south of New Skin, basically in their campus. So that street doesn't have curbing and when, when the water hits it, it flows directly into the landscaping. And they do a really good job to upkeep it and make it nice. And it holds up just fine with snow plowing in the winter as well.
This isn't a parking lot. This is a street, right? I mean, are we talking apples for apples?
Was that a question, Dave, for, for?
Yeah, that's, I mean, but.
Yeah, that is a street. Yep.
Yeah.
You know, I've seen it work, uh, both ways. And I think, uh, a lot of this, this is Andrew Howard. It's a, it's a lot, it seems to me, it's a lot situational, um, favored. Um, and I don't know what the criteria would be because I think Dave's point is right in that, in our bank. If you didn't have curve, you'd have, uh, people not meaning to drive into the retaining ditch do that. On the other hand, if you go to places like, um, uh, a nice golf course or Gettysburg, they don't have any kind of gutter and that, that kind of adds to the flavor. So, um, I wonder if there's some language that, that can help parse that.
So I, I'd be happy with, you know, at any national parks or, or golf courses in the community, we allow people to build parking lots with no curbs. But otherwise, I think the landscaping should be protected with a curb.
One issue with parking lots that I have seen, um, is that especially with a lot of church parking lots, um, the people who do the snow removal are not professionals. It's just somebody who has this winter extra job. Um, and so I think that they're a different quality or, um, level of snowplow driver than the people who do the roads. And that would be another consideration.
I really like the, the overall, uh, goal that we're trying to achieve here. Um, but, you know, going along with what we're just talking about right now, you know, with trying to protect the trees once they're in, uh, you know, I can think of parking lots up in Orem where, you know, trees have been hit or maybe they're diseased and dead. But, uh, the, you know, once they're gone, there's no incentive or reason to, um, replace the tree. And I think that if we're, uh, going to require a developer to, um, to put in all these trees, there ought to be some way that we can try to protect them, try to safeguard them. They're expensive to put in. And, uh, we, we are doing this for a reason to try to, uh, create the, stop the parking lots from, from becoming the, the heat shields that they are. I don't know how to say that, but, um, there's nothing that uh, makes the developer have to go in and replant trees if they're damaged. So we ought to do what we can now to make it so that the trees are protected once they're in.
This is Robert. Can I, can I ask you a question for clarification? Um, Dave, i- if I understand this correctly, um, your, your biggest concern is making sure that the landscaping and the trees, uh, that they've gone to great expense to put in stays protected. Um, are, would you be supportive of something that provides the, the curb? Uh, but then provides like, I, I think I heard you say inlets or something like that, that would still allow the water to infiltrate into those islands and into those areas, uh, but then accomplishes the separation between the parking lot and the landscaping? I- is that what I heard?
I sure hope so. That's what I tried to say. I apologize if I was not very clear, but yeah, and it's, it's to protect the landscaping and honestly, the asphalt as well.
Yeah.
Um, I think that edge becomes really important over time. So, uh, I, I appreciated what Deborah said. I think having sites, you know, particularly in urban settings that you have that clean edge to them, um, they'll end up, uh, aging much better than sites that don't.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I think that's, I think that's good counsel.
Any other comments, questions, commissioners?
I was just thinking that, um, we could, we could ask for that, but not be specific about what kind it needed to be. Just say they would need to provide a clean edge to the parking lot that still allows for drainage. Unless we want to really specify one style or two styles.
So the code currently does require curving. What you could change to is just say that the curving must have an inlet every couple feet or something like that.
Yeah. Or it could be something different, but I think it's important to have that look be. I've just seen how people drive, even with curbs, sometimes they're like, oh, I can't get past here, so I'm gonna make my own road. And those beautiful edges in the picture that's shown on the screen will end up with tire tracks along them because somebody whose car was too wide for the parking spot or something. That was all.
All right. Any other comments, commissioners, or questions?
I just want to quickly add that I'm, I really am happy to see, um, the additions of these trees. I, I looked them up and, uh, I think that they're a great addition, that, uh, they're really going to make a big difference in the parking lots. I really like these trees.
I'll second that. It's a big improvement. Uh, some of those examples that you showed, uh, of the parking lots in downtown Salt Lake that have extensive tree canopies, they're actually quite beautiful. They're not an eyesore as most parking lots are. So I think it's a, it's a great, uh, move in the right direction for us.
I think having those pictures, I know that's just for the meeting, but it's nice for people to visualize what they're signing up for. This is what you're trying to achieve. I think that's helpful, too.
Concur.
Yeah, I like that we're getting more visual with our code, um, regulations. Just showing examples, good example, what's, what's allowed, what's not allowed. So this might be a place where you could insert an image of, um, curb infiltration that works properly and that you're, you're trying to get that aesthetic for versus, you know, the dead zone parking lot with no trees and minimal landscaping and no water infiltration.
Yeah, I, I was excited to add these diagrams in the bottom of this slide because previously, these two landscaping shapes were just described in text. And so I, I think it's a lot easier if you just look at it to understand how it's supposed to be.
Yeah. And then when a developer comes to you and says, here's my site plan, um, you can say, well, here are the diagrams, so this is what you must follow. You don't have any wiggle room here. This is the requirement. And it makes it real clear to them, you know, what's required by the city to get a permit for this. All right. If we don't have any more questions or comments for staff, I will open this up to public comment. And public comment can be accomplished by either typing your questions in to YouTube and they'll be read back to us by staff, or you can actually call in. The number is six, 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 two, one, nine, two, five, nine, nine. Enter the meeting ID, which is three, seven, six, eight, six, three, zero, seven, nine, followed by the pound sign. And when asked for a participant ID, press the pound sign. Um, so I guess we'll wait for a moment with our administrator to see if we have any public comments, either neighborhood chairs or members of the community.
I don't have any YouTube comments right now, but there is a lag. So if we could just give them a few, uh, about thirty more seconds.
Great.
There are no phone comments.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think there's any YouTube comments. Someone was testing the system, but they're not writing a comment. So I'm not seeing any.
Okay, great. All right, then we will close item one to public comment and I'll turn it back to the commissioners for further discussion and/or a motion. And this will be a recommendation to municipal council.
I move that we recommend that the council adopt the proposed changes to the municipal code with a modification that would require some type of a raised curb barrier around landscaped islands in parking lots. While allowing for water to infiltrate into the landscaped areas via some kind of maybe underground way to convey it or some way or through breaks in the curbing or something like that. Um, that's not how I'd assume that it would be worded in the text, but that's the, that's the gist of what I'm trying to describe. So just with that change.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Anderson on item one. Provo City Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance amendment to section fifteen point twenty point oh nine oh of the Provo City Code relating to parking lot landscaping. The request seeks to increase the minimum canopy coverage and landscaping agreement within new parking areas with citywide application. And Mr. Anderson's motion furthermore, uh, states that a modification to require raised curbs with infiltration locations to planted areas be included in the regulations and those to be specified by uh, city staff. Do we have a second for Mr. Anderson's motion?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Johnson. All those in favor of a positive recommendation to municipal council on item one? And I'll start with Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
And Mr. Katzen? And I'll vote aye as well, Ms. Johnson. So that's unanimous. We'll follow up, we'll forward a positive recommendation on item one to municipal council. Right. That brings us to item two. Item two is administrative, so we will be making a decision on this, commissioners. Item two, Todd Sinks requests project plan approval for seven hundred and thirty-six apartment units located at one seventy-eight East eighteen sixty South in the campus mixed use zone. This is the East Bay neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore will present item two.
Uh, so the first thing is that originally, if you were here last year on the commission, uh, the zone change and concept plan was approved last May. Um, at that time, the concept plan had the idea of seven hundred and thirty-six apartments. Um, through this final project plan process, uh, the applicant has decided to phase his apartment buildings and is proposing three hundred and fifteen apartments in this first phase. Um, so just to clear that up. And then, so here's our area, eighteen sixty South or Lakeview Parkway, uh, just north of the golf course there. It's going to be on the, kind of the, uh, upcoming road that's going to head towards, south towards the, uh, Norta Medical Campus. Here's kind of a, a site plan of what that will look like. Um, I'm going to go through the floor plans briefly, just to kind of show you what is being proposed and um, show you the parking availability and amenity spaces. I'm going to try to highlight those for you. And let me try to spotlight that for you. Okay, so here's the ground floor. Um, as you can see on the west side, the parking deck is, has a barrier of studio apartments. And on this corner here, you've got your bike amenity space of, uh, bike storage and bike repair and so forth. And then again, uh, after the midpoint break, you've got more apartments and then your, your main access into the garage. Um, on this ground floor, you also have a pool area, barbecue pit. Uh, if you go to level two, uh, again, parking garage buffered by your residential units. And then on the second floor, you've got your fitness room. Third floor is got decks, uh, the show, sorry, the south and the north carts yards uh, with proposed playgrounds, pickleball courts, barbecue areas, so forth. And then you certainly get into the major, major, uh, area for dwellings. Uh, they have studio, one bedroom and two bedrooms. Uh, and we've also got some amenity spaces on each level. Uh, four and five are pretty much identical. And then six, you've got additional clubhouse on the top floor. Um, to go through the elevations, uh, you've received some elevations in your packets. Uh, this gives you a full west and east elevation uh, to show what that will look like to the street going to the Norta Medical School. And then on the back end of it, uh, on the east. And then on the north and south. So this is the elevation that will be up against Lakeview Parkway. Um, you've you've got some variations in the first two floors here because that is parking garage. They tried to break that up with landscape um, barriers. And then you can see the apartment units above. Uh, these were approved by the design review committee and recommended that the plan commission prove those. Here's your summary of of the units. And let me go through a few things with this. Um, so phase one of this apartment on the east um, is about a hundred twenty-one units per acre, um, in the campus mixed use zone. Uh, the second phase, which will be on the west side of the street, uh, we estimate that's gonna be about a hundred fifteen units per acre to bring both uh, east and west buildings to about a hundred seventeen units per acre as a whole. Um, the main thing that you'll note in your staff report is the parking brake that they're asking for. Um, I I did detail that in the overview, but let me just kind of hit some key points. Um, their TDM program, their transportation demand management program uh, hits on robust bicycle facilities. They've got about over twelve hundred square feet of indoor bicycle repair and storage. Uh, they've got proximity to employment centers. Uh, they're within walking, walking and biking distance of the East Bay Commercial District, jobs and shopping there, as well as proximity to the campus. Uh, builders imagine a lot of these units will be filled by Norta Medical students and they'll be able to walk and bike to campus, uh, just down the street. And then you've got proximity to mass transit. It's adjacent just to the north across Lakeview Parkway is the Novell UVX stop. Um, so with those things and the uh, transportation state that they provided, we felt that a one point five parking ratio was sufficient for their needs. Um, it's, they're providing four hundred and seventy-three stalls for this first phase where code would have required five hundred and forty-four. So there's just a break of seventy-one parking stalls. Uh, if you factor in the amount of students that uh, will be living here just to be close to campus, um, and in the other TDN program factors that I mentioned, uh, staff thought that it was an appropriate break. Um, so we we recommend approval on that to the planning commission. Um, we feel that this is a big improvement in the area. The East Bay neighborhood is so far just commercial. Um, this will be the first housing project in the in the neighborhood. And we feel that it's a good example of providing amenities spaces and using the amenities around it uh, to write a a good project for the the developer, the city and its residents. Um, so recommending approval and I'll I'll try to take any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on item two?
I have a quick one. Um, this, this is Andrew Howard. Thank you. Um, about six months, whenever we saw the uh, Norta Medical School going in, we were, we were given a presentation, a a a three D presentation of uh, that. And through the entrance ways, we saw the uh, the proposed apartment units and there were some comments on configurations. Has there been any substantial changes to that presentation? It was a, it was quite, uh, quite knifeful and it was very, uh, good at conveying the message.
Um, I know there's been some minor changes with actual medical campus, uh, where they're putting their parking and how they're orienting the the pedestrians to the campus. There's been some changes with that. Um, but as far as these apartments, the the biggest change was wrapping that parking garage with apartment units. Where in the first uh, couple submissions, they hadn't done that. So we thought that was a a best improvement.
Thank you.
On the topic of wrapping the uh, the ground floor level with units, um, I seem to recall during the initial discussion when they had the three D fly-throughs that we did discuss that. Um, but I see that along eighteen sixty south, they're still going to have just a blank facade. Um, the closer you are to the west, you're you'll at least be able to sort of cover some of that by grade change if the grade doesn't change. Um, but right along, I I just feel like they're still presenting a dead fit, a dead public face to along eighteen sixty. Uh, was was there any discussion with development services about the need to do something more than just put some plants out in front of two levels of parking?
We did look at that, um, with the design review committee as well. Um, I think the conclusion was Lakeview Parkway is a very fast-moving arterial street. Um, so that we didn't imagine there'd be much pedestrian walk through or need for kind of that pedestrian activity along that corridor and felt that uh, the western face being lined with glass uh, was sufficient enough for this project.
Well, I thought there's a UVX station close by and that was part of the rationale for reducing parking. Which would mean there is pedestrian activity.
So you can see here, the crosswalk is right off the corner.
Right?
Right, so here's the stop. So they would be essentially just crossing the street and coming down. So this is still uh, very much a dead area unless they're walking over to the golf course. Um, I guess that's kind of the explanation for that.
Also, this building is in the center of the construction, right? So when it's fully built out, the north end of this will not be visible from the street?
Say again?
If I I'm looking at the site plan is of the three buildings, isn't this one the first one to be built and it's in the center? Or am I misunderstanding the the drawing?
This is the first building to be built. There'll be one here and then there'll be one here. And then the medical campus will be down to the south.
Okay, show me that again.
So this is the first building here.
Right.
Uh, phase two of the residential units will be here on the west.
Oh, okay.
And then the street will be coming through down here to the medical campus.
So all the crosshatched areas part is what? Green space?
No, this is, this is the the floor area of the building.
Okay, so that thing in the middle is not the entire building. That's just the center of the structure that opens up. Okay, I understand that.
The grade access to the grade parking.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was misunderstanding the the picture.
Understood.
I agree with with Deborah that uh, even with traffic going at a, I mean, it's the speed limit's only forty-five there. It's very visible. If it's gonna be right up to the street, I think it should, it shouldn't look like a parking garage.
I just get upset when I hear someone say, not necessarily you, but when I hear the phrase, well, it's already an arterial and people just speed through. So why do anything better? You know, if if that's, if that's the outlook, that there's across the street is a big parking lot and UTA is investing in a UVX station over there. I would imagine with transit in place, that big parking lot across the street may someday be developed. It's kind of prime development territory as this all starts to build out. So I would not, um, preclude something positive happening across the street by putting a blank face onto Lakeview Parkway. That's my opinion. I understand that they're already asking for a parking reduction and if you put units to face along that side or some other use along that side, uh, some active use, that that's gonna squeeze the parking deck even more. Um, they would either have to go up another level or uh, reduce the number of units.
And I I do understand your point and I I agree with you. Um, I think that maybe there's a possibility for a compromise on some other treatments here on this north elevation other than concrete with panners in front. Um, there's all kinds of different treatments at parking garages you could see around the nation to make it more appealing. Um, I think that maybe there could be a a compromise there.
Yeah, I think it needs something besides concrete with some planters in front of it. Yep.
Even if they could make the design such that it looks like it's the rest of the facade, but there's not actually somebody living behind it. I think that would be better than two stories of the same surface.
Right, right.
Mr. Ardmore, going back to the parking, um, if they're having a reduction and they end up having excess, where is that spillover supposed to go?
I imagine it would go to the street. Um, this can be a large street here. Um, so I I imagine you could park on both sides of that street if there is spillover.
Okay, and visitor parking? Do they have an area that is designated for that? Is that what the those nine stalls that you can sort of see from above are? Or I guess they're eleven?
So they haven't marked those. Um, so I I guess that's up to the developer if they want to sign those as visitor or not. We don't have information on what they've designated as visitor at this time.
Okay. I'm also kind of wondering about the barbecue pit that is surrounded by cars and exhaust. Is that anticipated to be heavily used? Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Um, I had a question. Uh, what was the parking lot to the east of this site?
That is, what is that building? Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay. I was just thinking that if there is spillover from parking, that that particular parking lot might begin seeing an an increase in uh, cars. And so that would be a uh, um, indication whether or not giving this much of a uh, parking reduction is is a good idea or not. Um, so you, they might start complaining if there's a all of a sudden after this is finished, if there's a lot of extra cars starting to show up in their parking lot.
Well, and again, that's a private parking lot, so they could, they could put up signs and tell away any cars that weren't permitted.
Right, I can't imagine if there are a lot of extra cars that that one street coming down next to the building would be able to accommodate them all. If there are a lot of extra cars.
So another thing, when you look at the unit breakdown, uh, a majority of these units are studios and one bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so a percentage of one point five, I think, can handle a lot of those units. Um, a lot of studio and one bedrooms are only occupied by one person with one car. So that's another uh, thing to consider.
So I did some calculating because I was worried about the parking. And I just feel like whether they drive their car every day or not, the transportation plan that they are using is great as far as daily use of their car. But most tenants will still own a car and it will need to be parked somewhere. Whether it's leaving the building every day for fifteen trips or not is irrelevant. There needs to be a place for their car. So um, I did some like a a pretend scenario. I added up how many bedrooms there were with the two bedroom and the one bedroom and um, with the numbers given. And if half of the one bedroom units are rented to couples, we can assume they only have one car. And then if the other half of those one bedroom units is uh, is rented to a single student, we can assume they only have one car. Um, or the couples might have two cars, you know, like it, there's a whole lot of variables here. But then the two bedroom units, if we assume they're all rented out to singles with one person per room and all the studios to singles, that's like five hundred cars right there. So that's if if they are rented out that way. I just, I just worry, not to mention there's no visitor parking, talk, you know, you have a busy weekend where people have friends over or family over and there's nowhere for anyone to park. It's maybe the high, high capacity, but we have to prepare for at least close to that.
So those parking shows include visitor parking? That's what they're?
Right, but I'm just saying, if I add up all of the units and the number of people that will possibly live in them and assume that everybody comes to town with a car because most people do, whether they use it every day to get around or not, they, most people will have one. Am I wrong?
Well, you're making assumptions. I, like you said, there's a lot of variables that could change those factors.
I just feel like somebody who's gonna move into a place like this is not the same demographic as somebody who's moving immediately south of campus who might come without a car. They're more likely to be professionals who will have a car and just may prefer not to use it all the time. I just feel like we should stick with that one point five. I've seen too many times when when.
It is parked at one point five.
No, we were there asking for an allowance.
Yeah, they're they're asking for it to park at one point five.
Instead of what it should be, sorry. I can't remember what the numbers are, but they're asking for a reduction. And I feel like those rules are there for a reason. And I've seen too many projects around town where they've received a waiver of parking and then the neighborhood or the surrounding area, which yeah, there aren't any homes in this case that would be affected by extra vehicles, but it doesn't look good to have cars all over the street. Anyway, that was my thought on it. That I think the design and the layout of this place looks like a really nice place to live. The amenities provided looks like a really desirable place to live, but I think it's dangerous to assume that people will move in without a car simply because there's access to public transportation. Yes, they might not use their car every day, but I feel like they will come with a car and it will need to go somewhere.
Yeah, noted.
Anyway, that was my concern.
Was this, is this phase going to be completely done and occupied before they start phase two?
I don't know. You'd you'd have to ask the developer on their timeline. I don't have that information.
I would be interested in um, seeing information once it is um, occupied as to whether or not there is spillover. And if there is, I think that should affect the um, parking allowance, if any, for phase two.
I'd agree with that.
All right, any other questions for staff?
I think I need a little bit of clarification and I I'm sure I'm gonna embarrass myself here, but when we reviewed this, I think it was when the general plan and zoning was changed sometime ago, Aaron, what, a year ago, maybe? Maybe more than that?
Trust me.
It seemed like we talked a lot about the parking ratio then and some different things like that. I was under the impression that the waiver basically had already been granted.
No, uh, all that got approved last year was the zone change.
Okay. Okay. I completely agree. Um, I appreciate that there's some proximity of this site to some shopping and some different things like that, but I don't see people actually being able to live here without using a car. Uh, you know, in a personal way, on a pretty regular basis. Um, there's not, there there are a lot of things that this is very remote from. Um, so certainly relative to the parking, I have, I have that concern. Um, and the design for me, this is kind of reminiscent for me of the project on Ninth East, Sixth or Seventh North, something like that. Um, but uh, I'm less concerned about the design than I am just how it's gonna work in terms of parking and different things like that.
Right, commissioners, any other questions before I call the applicant? Right. All right, then at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant, Mr. Sinks or his representative to present his project plan to the planning commissioners.
Todd, go ahead when you're ready. Todd, go ahead when you're ready.
Todd, it looks like you're muted.
Mr. Sinks, you're mute, you're muted? We can't hear what you're saying?
Mr. Sinks, if you could press the mute key on the lower left side of your screen, you'll see a little microphone there. And that'll unmute you.
Aaron, who's the architect on this?
I don't know, let me look that up.
Do we have someone helping Mr. Sinks with this presentation? Looks like he's unmuted now.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
He's muted again. Mr. Sinks, you're muted again. If you could unmute, that would be great. Rachel, is there a phone number that he could call alternatively to using his computer audio?
Yeah, let me see if I can contact him. He, he can call in at that number we were giving out, the, um, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And then if he puts in the meeting ID, three, seven, six, eight, six, three, zero, seven, nine, then, um, he can participate in the meeting by phone.
And we have his slides?
I do not know.
He's unmuted now. It's not showing any microphone muted or not. Which I think means that there's nothing connected.
If Todd can hear us, can he check his email? We have instructions on how to get on.
Extension one nine two, is this Todd?
No, this is Melanie McCord. I'm attending and, and you've unmuted me and I don't think you want to do that.
Okay.
No call in yet?
Mr. Sinks, are you on? Todd Sinks, are you there?
Would it be appropriate to maybe put this item on hold and move to the next item and see if we can regroup with Mr. Sinks down the line?
Deborah?
That's probably a good call out Development Services, what do you think?
If you have public on to speak to this item, why don't we let them speak while we try to work this out?
I'm sorry, say again?
If there's any public on that wants to speak to this item, why don't we hear those comments or ask the secretaries if anything's coming in by email?
Okay, that's a great idea. All right, so before the, uh, applicant presents his project plan, uh, we have all the pertinent data that we've heard from staff, so I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the East Bay neighborhood who has called in or tech, uh, sent a message through YouTube? And I could again read in those instructions again. And this would be either neighborhood chairs or the general public. To participate in the public comment portion of the meeting, please dial six, six, nine, two, one, nine, two, five, nine, nine. Enter the meeting ID number, three, seven, six, eight, six, three, zero, seven, nine, pound. And then when you're asked for a participant ID, press pound. And the other option is to type in your comments in YouTube and staff will read those out to us.
Okay. Uh, I do have one YouTube comment.
Great.
And that is from Melanie McCord of Provo.
Okay.
She says, I agree with Lisa Jensen about the parking allowance. Haven't we learned anything in the decades that we have been fighting parking ratios? The demand always exceeds the supply.
Right, thank you. Did we have any other public comments at this time?
There are no public comments from phones.
Hello?
Is that Mr. Sinks?
Yes.
Okay, if you'll just hold on one moment, Mr. Sinks, we'll finish public comments.
Okay.
And then come right back to you, okay?
Okay, this thing just keeps going in and out, so, okay.
We'll hope for the best. Thanks for your patience. Any other public comments through YouTube or phone line?
No, I don't have any more on YouTube.
Okay. All right, we'll thank Ms. McCord for her comment and then we'll close this portion of item to public comment and turn it back over to presentation by the applicant, Mr. Sinks.
Okay, so from what I could hear going back forth, there's some concern on the parking rate north side of the building as far as the look of it. Um. So we've been refining this and we the last version that we have turned this into you guys, but that was for, to get site plan approval and we're working towards improving to get a building permit, turn in plans. But we currently have it sketched out at three hundred and twenty-five units, but we also gained a lot of parking. We're now at five hundred and twenty parking spaces, which puts it at a 1.6 parking ratio versus a 1.5 and it's quite a few more. And that's all, you know, covered parking, everything inside the building. That doesn't count anything out on the street that we said we couldn't count originally. So it's all pretty much everything, you know, covered parking and then a little bit right there by the front office. So as you can see those spaces there when you drive in. Anyhow, does that help at all?
So how many, um, spaces did you say, five hundred and?
And twenty. It should be a 1.6 ratio to the three twenty-five. I believe that's five hundred and twenty.
Okay.
And did you say it's still three hundred and fifteen units?
They, it's actually three hundred and twenty-five at this point. Um, they're looking at maybe changing that by one or two probably to the lower if they they're just trying to tweak a few things with stairwells and things like that, that, um, to make everything work out right, but, uh, that'll, you know, when we submit for a building permit, that'll, I'm sure get all hashed out and figured out exactly, but right now, the plans are all at three, at three hundred and twenty-five units, five hundred and twenty parking stalls. It puts it at 1.6. And I thought when we originally started talking about this, we talked about the parking ratio and we talked about it having coming down. We had numerous meetings on it and then we, Aaron, when we had those meetings with you and, uh, Bill Pepperoni, we talked about it and then we brought it down to 1.5, then we brought it back up to 1.6 thinking, okay, this is more than sufficient because the 1.5 got approved by everybody else and then now we're, anyways, we're at 1.6 right now, which is five hundred and twenty.
I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Sinks, if I may. This is Ms. Jensen.
Sure.
Um, when do you plan on breaking ground on the school?
The school, I'm pretty much over the apartments. Greg is more over the school. I'm I'm thinking that they're, they're shooting for July, July, August, September, somewhere in there. I mean, they hope to do it July, but it all just kind of depends on
Right.
you know, what happens here the next couple of months, but.
Right, okay. And, and concerning your, and the reason I asked that was, uh, I, I'm presuming that there's a thought that shared parking will happen with the campus and the housing?
Yeah, and that was our, and that was our plan. We basically said, okay, we're gonna do it with this. If we need overflow parking, we will use phase two as overflow for phase one if they're, if we start to see it. And if that's the case, then we'll adjust phase two to handle the amount of parking that was short on phase one, if we're short at all, which we don't think we're gonna be at 1.6. But then when we get into that, we also have the school that has their parking structures that have, you know, we have an agreement saying if we need it, we can basically lease it from them down the road if it, if it looks like it may be, may be needed, but right now, we're trying to make this all just all-inclusive, 1.6 parking ratio would be sufficient. But like I said, if it doesn't, we'll just board on phase two. If we need anything more on phase one, we'll use the land over on phase two and do a temporary, you know, asphalt parking lot or something like that if we need it, but we're thinking with five hundred and twenty spaces, that's gonna be plenty, plus you have, I don't know, I think nine out on the street. So that puts it above 1.6.
Okay. Thank you. And are, are you planning to, it's, it's hard to tell from the elevations, but are you planning on mechanically ventilating this deck? It looks like it's closed on all sides except for the entry.
Which deck are you talking about?
The parking deck, levels one and two. I don't see any, uh, openings.
Oh, no, it's open. It's not open on the front face. But there's.
It's open on the east face?
I believe so, yeah, and probably the south.
It's showing concrete panels, that's why I'm asking. It's, it's marked on the elevation as concrete. Which would infer mechanical ventilation, which is quite expensive for a parking deck that size.
Yeah, I don't, I'm pretty sure it's not totally enclosed. It's been closed on that west face because that's what they ask us to do, but I don't know.
I think it looks like there's windows on that second floor above each of the planter boxes because you can see like a column behind them. I think those are windows.
Which elevation are you looking at?
Um, all, all but the west. They have the, the planter boxes with the trees or shrubs drawn in them and then above that on the second story, there's like window looking.
Right, on the west elevation. West elevation is the only elevation that looks like it has perhaps some ventilation, but all the others look like they have none.
Oh, no, they look like there's a cut in the concrete. There's two little openings above each planter box.
Yeah, there's definitely ventilation there. I've never had that.
That wouldn't be ventilating the bottom floor, but anyway, that's a curious issue. I was just curious because, you know, we have this con, two two-level concrete wall.
You're right.
All three facades.
Yeah, so there's only ventilation on that second floor if that's what those are.
There's definitely ventilation on the bottom and the second floor, but I, I can't see any other plans right now in front of me. I don't have them with me and if, if, can you? Let me just text the architect, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's.
I don't think you can ventilate through concrete panels, that's why I was asking the question.
No, I don't think those are concrete. Anyways.
That would, wh- what I'm getting at is that would totally change the look of the deck if it's open versus closed concrete panels. So I would be surprised if it's, um, mechanically ventilated because that's an expensive solution.
I know it's not, but I, I mean.
So maybe the elevation, they're not up to date.
Be true, because they've changed this so many times trying to get the building plans ready to submit for.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Sinks? Um, I have one dealing with the, um, access to the the UVX. It does not look like there's any kind of an entrance to the parking on that northwest corner. Um, and I think that people would be interested in being able to get into the building um, without having to walk all the way down and in, and enter through.
without having to walk all the way down and in, and enter through that main driveway in the center. Has there been any thought to that?
That was a question for you, Mr. Sinks.
He's muted.
Hello?
Yeah?
Oh, keeps muting. Anyways, um, there's, I know the, as far as driving in, you drive through that main entrance there and then go through the parking lot that way.
I'm thinking our pedestrians.
Like just physically walking, like hitting the stairwells there?
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that if I, if I were a resident there and I was going to go to UVX, um, I would like to be able to leave the building relatively close to that intersection so that I wouldn't be, especially in the winter, walking along a wind tunnel, um, trying to get up to the bus. So if.
Yeah, well, I know, I know there's stairwells according to code everywhere they need to be on there. I just don't have the plans in front of me. I would assume that there's a stairwell. I mean, that's a huge building. There's gotta be a stairwell down there. I just, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Steph, could you go to the, the plan drawings, please? Thank you.
The plan drawing shows stairwells more towards the center.
Yeah, there's a, there's a stair and an elevator uh, on the front of the building.
And there's a stairwell going out to the east, but there's nothing on the north.
The northwest corner, that's a good.
It doesn't look like there's an exit there.
Yeah, there's, there's not. The closest one is down because that's off that main road. They don't want anybody coming in right there. They want them coming in, going down towards the medical school there. We talked about that, but they're like, no. I don't know, somebody brought up thing of homelessness, things like that. And they're like, look, you don't want an entrance off of 1860 anywhere. You want to have it come down and around and.
It looks like you can exit the stairwell out onto the street where the stair and elevator are, where your red dot is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's, there's a door there, so it looks like you can get out there.
Okay, which is not quite as far, but um, some sort of a a coded entry of some kind, um, a little bit closer wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, but I know it's all per code based on, you know, building code to where the entrances and everything are, so.
Okay.
Mr. Sinks?
Yes.
Mrs. Windin here. Um, so you will have phase one completely built and occupied before you start phase two, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Most likely. That's usually what everybody does. They want to make sure it's stabilized before phase two. Now, they, they'll probably start the plans and start designing phase two, um, when that's, you know, 70% leased up or something like that because it takes so long to get these things pushed through. So.
So if it's 70.
We hope to have this thing opened up.
If it's 70% leased up, then you won't have an accurate picture if your parking is sufficient, um, before you have your plans finalized for phase two.
I, I don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, the economy may change, but then we may not even start phase two for five years. We may start it. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely want to make sure that we improve phase two on any shortcomings we had on phase one. Hopefully, there won't be any, but there always is one or two little things that we could have done better and so we'll make sure that on phase two, we take care of anything that we have problems on phase one on. That's just, you know, common sense, but I, I don't, I don't know exactly when we're gonna be starting phase two. I mean, in a perfect world, we would, if this thing opens up in fall of '22, which is what we're hoping, um, it'll probably take a year and a half to lease up, so I would think probably in 2023, sometime in that ballpark, we'll start thinking about phase two and putting drawings together and, you know, taking the information we have so far at that point and, you know, most likely it'll, I'm, I'm very confident it'll be all leased up before we go for building permit for phase two. I mean, I, I don't think they're gonna spend that much money on phase two if they know what's going on.
Mr. Sinks, this is Andrew Howard. Um, I, um, I think 1.6 is definitely moving in the right direction as far as parking. I'm not sure if my colleagues, Phil, it solves the problem, but I, I think it might be. Uh, did you hear the comments on the building on the north side on the, on the street that, uh, it's kind of grabbing, what do you think of that?
Well, we, I thought we addressed them from the last time and that's why everybody passed off on it before and so if you wanted more than that, then I guess we should have been told that last time.
I'm having a hard time remembering what.
Well, last time we were only concerned with zoning changes, so.
Well, okay, all the other meetings we had with the city and stuff were talked about that side and that's what we came up with and everybody seemed to be in agreement and so, um, anyhow, we can, we can look at, uh, dressing that up a little bit more. I don't, you know, I mean, we definitely can't put units over there. That, that would mess everything up, but we could look at other options of, you know, dressing that up, but we can't make it like down on the way to medical school, return those all into units and then parking, I mean, that's a major, major redo if we're, if we're doing that. We're so deep into this project at this point, you know, it's, so we can look at dressing it up, um, but it's, yeah. I mean, we already dressed it up a couple of times to get to this point, but, um, anyhow.
Commissioners, we had a second part to the YouTube comment that, um, took it a minute to come in. Do you have time for me to read that?
Uh, let's do that after Mr. Sinks finishes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, did you guys have any more? I didn't know what else to address. I was going in and out of this thing on connection wise. So was there any other concerns that?
I just have a question about the barbecue pit area, kind of recreation area that is surrounded by the parking. Is that going to have an issue with automobile exhaust?
No.
Okay. All right.
Is that on level one?
It looks like it.
Yeah, seems like a strange place to put a barbecue.
Can you show me the plans where it's at? Because I don't recall and.
Um.
It's right in the center where those 11 parking stalls are that you just drive straight into?
You have to remember that it's next to the pool also, so there is a quite a wide open area there.
And are you sure that's not elevated right there?
Yeah, that's what I remember.
It says it's the level one.
To me, it seems like that's on the, you drive up to that area, that's like on the second, second tier or whatever. I mean, you don't drive up.
It does also seem to have a wall between it and the parking stalls.
Yeah, I recall that. I do believe it's in an elevated.
I know that. I mean, these guys have built these things all over the state. I can't imagine them, you know.
I think the plan's just depicting where it's located incorrectly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's elevated there, but I'd have to give it to the architect and nobody knew how this meeting was gonna go. I didn't think we'd even be able to talk in this meeting, so I didn't have anybody really join because I thought, well, it sounds to me like they're just having a meeting and and then.
Yeah, fooled you.
And, uh, move on because I thought this was approved. I mean, they had said everything's approved last time for the site plan. We're working on building permit, so, anyways, okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that's not a problem, but if you want us to, we can, yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Jensen?
So you said that the, we were given 315 units and um, 400 something parking spots, but you said it's now 325 units and 520. So how many of those additional 10 units are one-bedroom or studio or two-bedroom? What's the, how does that change the potential occupancy? Do you know?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know if I have the information right here in front of me.
Because the numbers that I was running, that made me panic, were just based on one person per bedroom. So if they're two-bedroom units, that bumps it up a little higher than one bedroom. And then there's always a scenario of two people per bedroom for somebody who really wants to print it out.
I know the ratios stayed almost identical. It's just that, well, I just gotta find the numbers here.
So do the units just get smaller and there's just more of them or are they?
Yeah.
Is the footprint bigger?
No, footprint's not even bigger. In fact, I think the footprint may have shrunk just a tiny bit, but the, uh, um, the unit's got a tiny bit smaller, maybe 5% or 7%, something like that and, uh, hang on, I just read something here, uh, trying to find the right email that has the correct unit count. Okay. Uh, that's not the right one because that says 317, but at, at this particular one, before we change it again, this was, uh, 19 studios, 195 one-bedrooms and 103 two-bedrooms. And that put it at.
Well, there's less studios than before.
Yes.
Okay.
They kind of turned them into one-bedroom lofts type of things instead, so.
Can you give me those numbers again? 19 studios?
Well, that only came to 317, so that wasn't the latest reading. That was like probably two ago, but it's, it's 325. I know the ratio's 1.6. Uh, you're trying to figure out how many one-bedrooms and, yeah, I.
I know that seems, I know it seems silly, but I just, I just know that there's a lot of people who look at at a unit as an opportunity to fill it to capacity and so you have to just kind of keep the worst-case scenario in mind. So I'm trying to figure out what that might look like.
Yeah, and I'm trying to find the right email here.
And then maybe while you're looking, Aaron, I have a question for you. Does the parking standard change when you have one-bedroom units versus two-bedroom units or is it just per unit?
Yeah, so studio and one-bedroom are held at one standard and two-bedrooms are held at a higher standard.
So you've already factored that into the number required?
We did on the numbers we were given, um, so these numbers have changed, so I'd have to look at.
That would be, I, I feel like that would be good to look at just to, to check again.
But the numbers, the numbers have changed favorably, not the other way, so I mean.
Right, it sounds like they have, but that would be an important factor for Aaron to have in writing so we could verify that it meets the code requirement.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't find this thing right now. I didn't know we're gonna be dealing with this right now, so. Too many emails. Anyhow, we can get that to you, but at this point, I'm not exactly sure of the split. I know the ratios seem, seem to I mean, they only vary probably less than one and a half percent either way.
So what do you think about a 1.6? Are we, are we as a body comfortable with that ratio, do you think?
I think we can discuss that after Mr. Sinks is finished.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sinks?
Okay, wait, wait, here we go, found it. All right, so 23 studios. It's not to change. 205 one-bedrooms and 97 two-bedrooms. And according to this, there's 500, not 520, there's 516 stalls. So this is the latest. And like I said, this, this may, based on our meetings today, it looked like we may have to take out one, maybe two units from this uh, due to a change in stairwell and stuff, but, uh, this should be close enough for what we're after right now.
Have you got funding lined up for this project?
Uh, it's in the works. We're dealing with three or four different investors right now, so we're, we're trying to get this thing finally approved with building permit and get a cost breakdown that's tight so that we can go out and finalize this with, with the investors, so. It's how we can get to that point. We're still kind of on hold.
I have one more question about the parking deck.
Okay.
And I think we have level one plan up on the screen. Uh, and this would apply to level two as well. The drive aisles on the right-hand side of the drawing, so that would be the east side, I'm sorry, the north side of the deck are, yes, you can just drive in. Uh, there's nowhere to turn around if there's no space there, so you have to drive back out. That's, um, not a very good parking deck design. And I understand somebody probably laid it out like that just to get as many spaces as you possibly could, but in practicality, it's not gonna work.
So I'm a little bit confused on these questions because I thought this was a site plan approval, not a building permit type discussion. Like these, to me, are questions that we all discuss on the, when the building plans are submitted. I thought this was all about the site plan and just getting the site plan approved. So all these questions are kind of throwing me off because this is not what I was prepared to discuss. Like this is more like, okay, we submit for building permit, here's our building plans. Now let's critique all the building plans and let's, you know, anything that you don't like, let's get fixed and I'm, I'm just a little bit, Aaron, can you address that a little bit? I'm, I'm kind of confused on why we're going in so much depth when this is supposed to be.
Mr. Sinks, the planning commission is the one who approves your project plan and the planning commission is the one who decides whether or not your parking reduction is warranted or to what degree it's warranted. These questions are asking are all absolutely typical of a project plan review and um.
I, I just not prepared because of the, the architect, the builder, all these other people not on the calls because I thought.
Yes, typically the architect or somebody who knows every inch of the building plans is in the meeting so that they can answer these types of questions.
Yep. Okay, so answer to that, yeah, I'm gonna have to give it to the architect and builder and find out what's going on, but.
Well, I think it's likely we'll table this. If, I think we're eager to help, but I think it might be good if we did that here from the architect.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mr. Sinks right now?
No, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Howard. I think that there are some questions that we probably need to get the answer to, probably need to speak to the architect.
That having been said, however, um, we could give you some guidelines on the things that we like and don't change or the things that we think need change.
I think we still have public comment to, uh, to hear.
Yeah.
Yes, the second half of the public comment from Melanie McCord of Provo was, "Has the developer written the adjustment clause into a development agreement? I have heard too many developers make if we need it guarantees that were not carried out."
Thank you. And I, I get, that will be something that staff can address. Uh, Mr. Sinks, did you have anything else you wanted to, uh, to add to the discussion at this point?
Uh, no, just whatever concerns and we'll address them and have everybody at the meeting next time.
All right, I will turn it back over to the. Alright, I will turn it back over to the commissioners then for further discussion, emotion and uh actually, I'll let staff lead off if they had answers to any of the questions that they heard expressed during that discussion with Mr. Sinks.
So um I, you know, new information has been brought forward that staff didn't have, um so we don't have any questions to, or answers to address the questions that were brought up at this time.
Okay, there's no development agreement in process right now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So wait a minute, on that development agreement, there is not a development agreement, because I asked for one numerous times and they said, well, it's basically part of the medical school development agreement. So Aaron, when you say that, what does that mean? That they're supposed to be? Because I tried to get one in place numerous times and were rejected saying, no, you don't need one, is part of the medical school thing. And I said, even though it's separate projects, because our investors were were asking about that too, so.
So Mr. Sinks, a development agreement has to be proffered by the developer. The city staff can't ask for that. It's something you have to offer. And the development agreement is usually offered when the developer is proposing to do something that's a promise to that's being made, it's beyond what we can require by code. Like like exactly what you said, that you're gonna make up for any parking deficit on phase two with phase and and phase one with phase two. That's something you have to propose to us and we have a standard form for development agreement that can be filled out. But until a developer offers that, there's the staff can't demand it.
Okay.
So is that something that he would do as part of his application, saying I want a reduction of parking and here's what I'm gonna offer in exchange for that?
Or what happens is the developer hears the concerns by the planning commission and offers to do put some things in a development agreement to assuage the concerns the planning commission is that is expressed.
How does that usually work out? Like, does, do the neighbors just have to complain if they don't like it, or is there some mode of follow-up that ensures a developer's word gets taken?
Well, once a development agreement is written and signed, it's a contract between the developer and the city council, and the city enforces that if we we see there's a problem.
Okay, so it's basically just a legal way to enforce something that otherwise wouldn't be written down?
That we can't enforce by code.
Okay.
Great clarification. Commissioners, I'm hearing some uh trepidation about approving or disapproving this at this point, that we need more information. Is that correct?
I would, I would say so, and I would also like to say, I'm, given the economic situation, we're all eager to see this project succeed for the benefit of the economy and for and for the project, but I think that if if we can give him some time to get his architect together, maybe answer a few questions on parking and that north face uh and the agreement, uh that would be helpful.
I would also, I also agree with that, that I really like the this project. I think it's a great, it looks like a place I would want to live. I just, I think we need to see something that has more firm, like, that's your most recent version of it. So we can trust the numbers, we can trust the design, so that if we give it the go, that we know that that's exactly what's gonna happen.
Yeah, we can, we can def, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, we can definitely do that. So.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I'll beat the broken record here about parking. Um, I haven't been a big fan of parking reductions. This for me is like some other parts of the community where I I really can't find much justification for a parking reduction. I really appreciated the way that Commissioner Jensen kind of analyzed what she feels the need for parking is. I think that's a very practical, pragmatic way to look at it. Um, if we're going to talk about reducing the parking here, then I think we should instead be talking about just changing the parking standards for the whole city, citywide. Um I I can't get my head around why less parking makes sense in this location more than it would anyplace else. So those are my comments for my colleagues on the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Can can I just ask one more question from Aaron? Didn't the parking? Yeah, sorry.
You had a question for staff?
Yeah, um, the parking ratio did get re- reduced, um, and I thought that was a citywide thing, or maybe it was just for this zoning thing, or Aaron, can you? It's been so long, I can't remember, but that's why we basically designed this whole thing the way we did.
There was an ordinance enacted that gives the opportunity for a parking break, which is what we're discussing tonight in planning commission, uh which had to be twofold, uh engineered study and then a transportation demand management program. Uh, that's that's in fourteen thirty-seven, so it gives the ability, but it's not a by right reduction.
Okay, but all those things were provided, right, and were talked about?
Right, and then it's up to the planning commission to see, to say if that's justified or not.
Thank you, Mr. Arkwore. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Motion?
I, one question I have is, if there were not a park parking reduction, how many spots would be required?
Thirty-three more than what he's showing. He's uh if the five hundred and twenty is really there, like he's representing, he's asking for a reduction of thirty-three, thirty-three spaces.
Okay.
So staff is comfortable with a reduction of thirty-three spaces on a five hundred and twenty parking stall project. But again, this is the planning commission decision.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would help to see um a configuration of the parking that does accommodate the turnarounds and those kinds of things. Um, overall, I like this um plan. And I think um it's a good place for that to happen. I'm really excited about the medical school coming in. Um, just Provo has parking issues, and so we're sort of the once burned, twice shy situation.
I agree. I think it's going to be a a great project in this location, and you may even have people who want to live here that work over across the street at Novell. Uh, you know, there, we don't know what the market is, and I guess this will be the first test of it in this area. Um, I'm not overly concerned about thirty-three parking spaces being reduced. I don't think that's a huge quantity, given the scale of the project. And we do have the option of phase two. That site's either going to be put into parking, uh I'm sure it'll be used for staging during construction. Uh, there there lots of ways that site could be used until it is uh ready, the market says we're ready for phase two to be built. Um, and phase two, when phase two comes around, then if we see that parking was an issue with phase one, we have a test case on our plates. It's entirely possible, we don't know what's going to happen with the market right now, the economy. Entirely possible phase two will never happen. It's possible. We hope not, but it's possible. So I I'm not overly concerned about thirty-three parking spaces being short. I'm a little concerned about the drawings, because I think they're not accurate uh in terms of the way the parking deck is laid out and some of the other things that are shown, but um you know, those are all more project approval or building permit approval uh details.
Yeah, I um actually, I'm thinking that if is part of the um development agreement, the developer was to say, okay, we will put enough asphalt on the other side to accommodate another twenty to thirty cars if necessary, I'd be comfortable saying in general, yes, I would approve this, and then there are just a couple of issues of aesthetics and layout that need to be clarified before final approval happens.
I mean, you could even, you could even uh require or say at this point is condition of project plan approval that the missing thirty-three parking spaces are provided across the street on phase two land.
The the only problem I see that may, that's just, I mean, that thirty-three, thirty-three is really a problem. Um, I just, I mean, we may be biting off another six to eight more months and moving into another year, because remember, this this is being built on on a dump. I'm I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying this process has taken so long to get to this point because of where we're building this thing and and it's basically a dump. So I had to go through the Department of Environmental Quality with the state on the DQ to to get a voluntary cleanup plan approved to make sure that, okay, we're building on this site, everything's properly mitigated, and this will go with the title of the land and move, I I I know you guys probably don't know or anything about that, but that's another process we have to go through. So when I say I want to just go throw a slab of concrete over there and say, hey, you can park here, I don't want to get ahead of myself, because that could cause that we have to then get another Department of Environmental Quality Plan approved, and that thing took six to eight months to get the first one approved, so if that's really gonna be, now we're talking another year out and for thirty-three spaces, I I I I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's not as easy as you think to just say, well, it's not gonna work, so we need thirty-three or nothing, you know, and it's like, well, okay, there, I don't know. There's been so many, anyhow, I'm just throwing that out, that it's not that simple just to say, okay, let's do it, you know, I'll have to do all the analysis, we can do that.
Understood.
I I can't hold my tongue any longer. I I really am wondering why we even have the standard that we do. I mean, parking and granting leniency from the standard seems to be part and parcel with every apartment project that we review. Um, what's broken with the standard? Or so broken that it's always open for debate or argument or um speculation, whatever it might be, it's just this, this subjective number that's thrown out there. Um, as I understand it, design and different things like that, as a commission, we really don't have much legal latitude to comment on those types of things. I think this is an administrative approval, and really the only thing that we have much discretion to to use when evaluating whether or not this gets approved or not is that parking reduction. So the, in theory, this should be a really quick, cut and dry discussion about approving this project with the zoning in place and and that type of a thing, so that's a little frustrating for me that this consistently gets as much airtime as it does.
It's a very valid point.
Well, Madam Chair, uh I'd like to move that we table this to the next available meeting. Do we have any idea what that might be?
Uh, are there any specific is that to update the number of units, number of parking spaces?
And and a discussion on the doorstep.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you're on the right track.
It says in the staff report that the next available meeting date is May thirteenth.
Mr. Sinks, if you're architect, could he be available on that date?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Howard, do you want to uh propose?
Yes, I I propose we uh, I move that we table this until that date uh to give Mr. Sinks time to uh uh talk to our staff and to get his architect uh ready and to answer the questions of the parking, the north design in further detail and and any nuances with the uh overall design.
Yeah, the airflow in the parking area as well.
Alright, so Mr. Howard's motion for.
And the agreement.
Is Todd Sinks requests project plan approval for three hundred and fifteen apartment units located at one seventy-eight each eighteen sixty south and the campus mixed-use zone in the East Bay neighborhood. Mr. Howard's motion is to continue item two until the May thirteenth planning commission hearing. Do we have second for Mr. Seconded by Ms. Wynden? All of us in favor of continuing item two until May thirteenth? I'll go through the roster. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
And Mr. Knudsen? We may have lost Mr. Knudsen. Okay, and Ms. Jensen, aye, so that's unanimous. We will continue item two until May thirteenth. Thank you, Mr. Sinks. Sorry for the technical problems, and hopefully it's a little smoother next time.
Appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that moves us to item six, which is legislative. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code Sections fourteen point twenty-seven point twenty and fourteen point twenty-seven point eighty relating to permitted uses and yard requirements of the M-one light manufacturing zone respectively. The request is to add the sale of combustible petroleum products as permitted uses and to add the sale of flam- and to add the sale of flammable petroleum products as a conditional use in the M-one zone. As well as allowing the Development Services Director to modify yard requirements in the M-one zone. This will have citywide application, and Mr. Mills will present item six.
Hey, thank you very much, Commissioners. Uh, so I I have a few slides that I wanted to go with through with you and then have a good discussion tonight. Uh, so just in summary, uh as Ms. Jensen just pointed out, uh the purpose of this uh is to modify uh the M-one light manufacturing zone by uh adding uh SLU code fifty-one ninety-two, uh which states specifically uh to add petroleum bulk stations and terminals and then limits it only as to the sale of petroleum products listed in the International Fire Code as combustible liquid lock classifications, thus to three A and three B. Uh, those are to be added as a permitted use in the zone, and then uh using the same SLU code, uh we're adding petroleum bulk stations and terminals for the sale of petroleum products in flammable classifications. Uh, and those are classes one A, one B, and one C of the International Fire Code. And those are uh proposed to be added as a conditional use in the M-one zone. Uh, we have created specific conditions that are in the uh that's in the language uh that any applicant would need to follow. Uh, there are a couple of things that, or there's one thing that we're removing. Uh, the natural or manufactured gas storage and distribution points as a conditional use in the M-one zone. Uh, so that means that it, anything uh using that code could have uh just been a principal use on the site. Uh, instead, we're stipulating now that that only be an accessory uh used to a primary use in the zone, and it limits any, the tank to five hundred gallons. Uh, we're also recommending to add language to the yard requirements of the M-one zone that would allow the Development Services Director to modify the requirements, uh if it results in more efficiency of the of the site and no undue hardships are created. So I just wanna uh quickly explain and emphatically state that um this, even though this uh partic- This, even though this, uh, particular, uh. Proposal is for the, uh, citywide application to all M one zones. Uh, there is specific, um, applicability to the Christianson Oil Site. Um, and I just want to explain that there is a, a strategic purpose in this. And, um, for those of you who are aware of this, of the site, I'll go through some, some slides of it, but. Um. We are trying to make an unide, unideal situation. The best and safest that it can be. Um, so we're, we're hoping to add some regulations for some uses that are already existing. Uh, and that are going to remain there. I also want to point out that, um. Gary McGinn is with me tonight, uh, Lynn Schofield, our fire marshal is also, uh, in this call and. Uh, will hopefully be jumping in at any time, uh, as we go through this, but. I'm not sure if Christianson Oil is on yet or not. I know they received the, an invite, but. So just a little bit of background since this is specifically, uh, since Christianson Oil Site is specifically affected by this proposal. Uh. In nineteen thirty-five, uh, Utah Oil Company acquired the site and established it as. A petroleum product distribution operation. Uh, Owen Christianson began working there in the forties. Uh, then he bought out the operation in nineteen seventy-three and established Christianson Oil. Um, the site and operation have been expanded over time. However. Uh, the use of petroleum product distribution has remained the same. Uh, currently, uh, this specific use is considered a legal nonconforming. Nonconforming use because it was legally established. Uh, but it is no longer a permitted use in the zone. So, uh, Commissioners, this is, uh, the Christianson Oil, uh, Site. This is six hundred south. And this is, uh, fourth east. And, um, the site unfortunately didn't show up very well, but. It includes this property. Um, I had a chance to.
That was three hun, that was three hundred east.
That's three hundred east, that's correct. Thank you. Um, these are some photos that I took this morning, um, just to give you a bit of reference, uh, for the site. Um, it's as if you were, uh, driving around the block going up three hundred east. And then, uh, coming to five hundred south. And then coming down two hundred east. And then, uh, this is their office building on the corner. And then again, traveling back, uh, east on six hundred south. Um, again, we just want to reiterate that, um. This is a situation that, uh, in the ideal world, uh, would not exist. Uh, in nineteen thirty-five, um, a, a decision was made to allow. Uh, that particule, particular use. To come to the site. Uh, these homes, uh, that you see here were actually established. Uh, they were on the site. Um, and so at that point, there was a decision made that allowed. A manufacturing slash industrial use, uh, to come into a, uh. Somewhat residential neighborhood. The railroad tracks are actually right here. And so there is some logic as to why they were located there, but. Um, whatever the, whatever the situation was, that, that's what we have. They have continued in operation. Uh, since that time. Um, and what we want to do with these regulations is actually hopefully make the site safer. Um, currently, uh, they have. Uh, a nonconforming status and they're able to continue operation and that is their intention. Uh, to continue operating there. Um, but there are certain things that they are storing on the site, uh, in some barrels and things like that. Uh, that they would actually like to put into safer and, uh, better aesthetically pleasing tanks. Um, but they can't do that, uh, because they cannot expand their nonconforming use. Uh, so, uh, in working with, um, a working group in the neighborhood. Uh, city staff, uh, heavily relying on the fire department. Uh, we came up with this drafted language that, that you've seen. Uh, and we can go over that if you'd like, uh, further, but, uh, in hopes of, uh. Being able to actually make this a permitted use as far as the combustible materials go. And then any, um, future expansion of any type of flammable, flammable materials. Uh, would have to go through the conditional use process and be reviewed that way. Um. Just out of, out of a matter of clarity, uh, combustible materials are a little bit different. Um, eh, we're talking about flashpoints here, uh, so they ignite at a much higher temperature. Than flammable materials and that's, that's the reason why. Combustible is lower than flammable. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, flashpoint for combustible materials is a hundred degrees Celsius. And flammable is anything less than that. So for instance, gasoline versus oil and, and things like that for clarification, but. Um, I thought it would be prudent to, uh, that, that's kind of going over the things that I wanted to share with you regarding. This language and this proposal. Um, you can see on here, this is, uh, some of the things that we're eliminating from the code. Uh, and then adding the uses over here. Um, that specifically state that, uh, the combustible materials are added in here and then. Um, the natural gas, uh, as an accessory use only. Uh, and then this is the conditional use section of the code. Uh, these are the yard requirements. Uh, we, we felt that it would be important to allow. Uh, the Development Services Director to be able to, um, use discretion. Uh, in, uh, making any modifications that seemed necessary to sites in this zone. Um, uh, but with some specific findings that he or she would need to make. Uh, I thought it would be prudent to let, uh, Mr. Schofield have. Uh, just a few minutes to explain maybe some of the background and some of the reasoning behind. Uh, the fire department's support of this. So, uh, Lynn, are you there?
I am here. Hello from sunny western Nevada.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
So if I could give just a little bit of background on, on this particular, um, project and then I'll stay on. Uh, to answer whatever questions you may have throughout the rest of the discussion. In May of two thousand nineteen, a protest was held at the Christianson Oil Site. Um. Which resulted in a flurry of complaints being, um. Lodged against Christianson Oil, uh, by some of the neighbors. Um, in October of two thousand nineteen, I did a site visit. Did a thorough inspection of the site, uh, responded back to the neighborhood with what the findings. A summary of the findings of that inspection, which is that Christianson Oil currently has no outstanding fire code violations. Um, my boss, Chief Miguel, who's been a superstar in this. Uh, got a call from one of the neighbors who wanted to visit with him because. They were not convinced that that was the appropriate, the appropriate, um, ruling. And so Chief Miguel went out and met with. Uh, this person as well as I think five or six other. Uh, neighborhood members in the Mazer neighborhood. And I believe Ms. Wynden, were you at that first meeting?
I was.
Okay. And so Chief Miguel came back after the meeting. And he came into my office and he, and he said, listen, I have, I have people who are terrified to go to sleep at night. Um, because they live in proximity to this particular, uh, facility. And so a meeting with, uh, Gary McGinn, a whole bunch of city staff. Um, was called and we've been trying to figure out this particular problem. Which for the record has been going on for over twenty years. Um. And so in the course of this meeting, um. One of our, our wise city attorneys, Mr. West. Um, asked, would you be worried if you lived next door to Christianson Oil? And I, I told him, I said, I wouldn't lose a week of sleep. I just wouldn't. There's just not, I mean, there's a risk there, of course. Um, certainly no more risk than there is at the rail yard. Um, but, but I wouldn't lose a week of sleep. And, and he asked if my children lived there and I said, no, I wouldn't. And then we came to the conclusion that part of the, part of the problem over the last twenty years. Is that I look at this from a fire safety point of view. I look at this through the lens of a thirty-four-year firefighter, a fire marshal for the last twelve. And I see, I see a, a safe facility versus some of the folks in the neighborhood. Who look at this as an unsafe facility. And so we decided to maybe. Try and engage this group and go in and talk to them and try and find out what their concerns were. And how we could, how we could try and fix this. So that it wasn't continuing to be this festering wound. And so we met, uh, three or four times with this group of Mazer neighborhood residents. We talked to them about, um, the fire code, how the fire code's adopted, how the fire code's applied. Um, we gathered their concerns about, um, trucks in the neighborhood, the hazardous materials routes that were being used. How could we make those better? Uh, we talked to them about what are their concerns about the site itself and. And, uh, Ms. Wynden certainly will correct me if I'm wrong or Bill will correct me. Um, our biggest concerns with the hazardous materials routes which have been. Um, formalized now with their input and, and adopted in the city master plan. And then, um, the. Uh, an idea of what the growth was projected for this site. Was this going to be something that continued to grow and grow and grow and grow until there wasn't any more, any more, um, area to grow? So we took that group and we went to Christianson Oil. We went on a tour. We let the, we let the group. Um, meet Todd Christianson, go through his facility. Um, ask him questions, get information on any of the issues that have been brought up previously. And then we started looking at, how can we make this? How can we make this? So that it's better for both Christianson Oil, who's, you know, respected, uh, business partner in our community. And certainly the Mazer neighborhood, um, who we want to feel safe and to sleep well at night. And so the, the idea was, um, sometimes if your computer, if you're a baby boomer like me, you have to hit Ctrl Alt Delete. And so the thought was maybe we come back to the M one designation. And we allow this to be a permitted use. And that gives Mr. Christianson some guidance in what he can do. Um, as far as expansion of the various kinds of tanks that he has. It gives the city some oversight and what they can do. And it gives, and opens up the line of communication with the neighborhood. So that they can, um, have some input. Um, as they move this forward. Um, I, I can tell you that my experiences with Todd Christianson are that he's not an unreasonable person. Um. So that's, that's kind of how this came to be. And then. Through the course of this, we found out that you, you absolutely could put in a. Natural gas or a liquefied petroleum gas, um, distribution center in that site. And we all thought that that was a really bad idea. And so Robert started working on this, on this ordinance text amendment that you have before you tonight. Which, um, would do as he said. To reset this to zero, um, allow it to be a permitted use. And let us move forward and perhaps maybe let this neighborhood heal. So I, I'm happy to answer any questions as the discussion goes along, but that's. But my person, well, as a fire marshal, I am in favor of this ordinance text amendment. I think it takes us to, in a good direction.
I have a question, Fire Marshal.
Certainly.
Across the railroad tracks, uh, to the, uh, south and to the west, there's Hudson Oil, I think. Uh, is that also, would this also apply to them or is that in a similar zone? And. Can you compare and contrast the two operations? Is there anything? I mean, this is citywide application, that's why I asked this question.
That's correct. And I, I do not know what their zoning is over there. Um, the big difference between the two. Uh, the two operations is that. Um, Christianson has a much larger lubricating oil business. The majority of the tanks that you see in this overhead photo. Um, which I would show you with my laser pointer, but that won't help. Majority of the tanks that you see along the north, so all of those, those are all lubricating oil tanks. All of these upright tanks here are lubricating oil tanks. Um, the flammables and combustibles and other liquids are down in the tall tanks here that border six south. Um, and then in his warehouses, he has, uh, some lubricating oils for industrial uses and, and stock products like you would find it. At, uh, Pep Boys or Autozone of motor oils. Um. So I don't know if they're in, if that. Um, facility is in the M one zone, uh, they principally are in. Using flammable and combustible distribution, not lubricating oil.
Thank you.
So thanks, Lynn. Um, maybe just before too many more questions, I just wanted to. You know, reiterate to the, to the planning commission members and to anybody who is listening and neighborhood. Um, staff fully realizes that this is not the most ideal situation. Um, but, but we really have thought long and hard about what might make it better. Um, uh, we, that's one reason that we separated the combustibles and the flammable materials. Uh, and additionally, um, you know, previously, uh, anybody could have come in here with a. You know, an enormous propane tank facility that is highly flammable. Uh, and could have caused much more damage and things like that. Uh, uh, as a, as a, as a use that could just go in, um. And so we, that was why we recommended that it only be an accessory use, similar to what you would see. Like a Home Depot or, or something like that. So. For those reasons, um, though, that's why we're recommending that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation. Uh, to the city council. In a perfect world, uh, one of these uses would, would not be here and, uh, but. It is what it is and we're trying to make it the best we can.
Uh, this is Gary and I'm in the room with, uh, Robert. Uh, one of the ironies of this situation is. That as a permitted use, as Robert said, you could put in. A propane tank farm here, which is extremely flammable and extremely dangerous. Under our code, that was permitted. And could have come in as a matter of right. And so in working with Christianson Oil, uh. They understood that and wouldn't want to be next to something like that. So. They, uh, suggested that we take this out of the code and we agreed to protect. Uh, people from a much more dangerous situation and then put in allowing combustible. Uh, materials which flashpoint is much, much lower than, uh. Uh, propane. And so that's kind of the, the thought behind that. I, as a matter of fact, I think. Uh, the, the lubricating oil flashpoint is actually much higher than the flashpoint for paper. So storing paper on site would be actually from a fire issue, much more dangerous than, than storing the lubricating oil. Which has a higher flashpoint than paper does.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Commissioners, any questions for staff or Mr. Schofield or Mr. McGinn?
I have some questions.
Ms. Jensen?
Um, so as I was looking at the text in the permitted and conditional uses, wherever it lists fifty-one ninety-two, they both look the same. As a matter of fact, the conditional uses actually have some additional bullet points that make them look more restrictive. Can you explain why the language looks similar in both?
So that, that's correct, Ms. Jensen. So, um, we're using the same. Standard line of code, uh, the fifty-one ninety-two. The only, uh, the difference is, is in the, um.
Oh, combustible and flammable.
Permitted uses is combustible.
Okay.
Conditional use is, um, flammable and that's why we put those specific conditions in there. That they have to meet those.
I just now see that there was one word different, which was the flammable and combustible.
We're just trying to trick you.
Yeah, I see that. You got me. Okay. My other question, um, are there other M one properties in the city where making this a permitted use would be a bad idea?
Um, there, there are not. There, there are not a lot of M1 properties in, in the city. There, there are several that are actually located right here along 600 South. And we believe that those, that the benefits of this would apply to all of those, those zones, which is one major reason why we did this citywide.
So the changes are actually making it more restrictive even to those that are conforming uses?
And it's also, yeah, it's, it's actually
In a good way.
Regulation to something and, and removing some actually quite dangerous uses.
Okay, and it sounds like the, the fire code regulates the danger sufficiently that it's difficult to put, put these uses in just as a right of, this is allowed in the code anyway, right? Aren't there other restrictions that are implied by the nature of the use?
Yeah, by, by no means are they only regulated by Provo City Code. So primarily
So even though it's allowable, there have to be certain distances and
Absolutely.
Ever to make it allowable anyway?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that I understood the benignness of the suggestion.
Any questions?
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I have one more, sorry. In the yard, the setback requirements. Let's see, this is page four of the staff report. About how natural gas can be stored. It says the text amendment allows the Development Service Director to modify the yard requirements. So is this also a fire hazard modifying yard requirements? So we want to give flexibility to setbacks with hazardous land uses was?
So they would still have to, I mean, they would still have to abide by all of the, the other codes, the, the fire code and things like that.
Does that seem like that was one of the major concerns of the neighbors? Was that there was proximity, this perceived infringement on their space that, that may put them in more danger because of the way something was stored or whatever? So I just wanted to make sure that giving that flexibility doesn't open up a can of worms somewhere else that they can, they can get too close to a neighboring use.
Right, and I think we were very, we're very cognizant of that and sensitive to that. And so one reason that we, we put this specific language in here that says, the Development Services Director may modify the requirements on a finding that deviation from those requirements would result in a more efficient use of land and that the modification would not create undue hardship on any surrounding property.
All right, for real this time, those are all my questions. Thank you.
So in a nutshell, Mr. Mills, this really increases the enforceability of what happens on this site in terms of safety and restrictions for the city.
That is our sincere hope.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for staff, Commissioners? Mr. Anderson? No?
No, sorry, I thought I was muted. No.
No problem. All right, well, I, I know we have received several public comments. Those were emailed to us by staff during the week, and we've had a chance, the Commissioners have had a chance to review those. And again, members of the public can participate in the public portion of the hearing on item six by typing a comment into YouTube, and then that will be read out. And we ask you to keep that succinct. We have a two-minute time limit. And you can also participate by dialing 669-219-2599. Enter meeting ID 376-863-079 and press pound. When asked for a participant ID, press pound again. And that's a phone line that will be answered during this session. We do ask that if you have sent an email or a letter to planning or to community development that you not reiterate those points. We've all read those points and reviewed them thoroughly. So I'll turn it to the administrator. Do we have any public comments at this point?
Yes, we, we have one, Melanie McCord of Provo. She says, "The text amendment to the city code makes absolutely no sense. It's a bad idea. Here's why. Past councils have agreed that industrial and manufacturing uses should not be located directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods. That goal is stated in at least one of the city's previous general plans. But I am certain that in discussions by previous councils, the standard has been agreed upon publicly. Manufacturing and industrial uses are inconsistent with the city's goal to preserve neighborhoods. Past city administrations have even used city resources to remove manufacturing and industrial uses out of residential neighborhoods. They should do so again for Christianson Oil." Example number one, when Cooney's Animal Rendering Plant caused odor problems in the city's industrial zone in East Bay, the city came up with millions of dollars to purchase the plant, and the state economic development office contributed millions more to move the plant. The city got directly involved in order to make the city better for everybody. Example number two, when Action Target's outdoor painting and heavy truck traffic through the residential neighborhood in Dixon, the city arranged for the purchase of that property and once again came up with money to relocate the plant. The construction of Action Target and Mountain Vista was an enormous boon to the city in other ways, i.e. Action Target acted as an anchor for other businesses to locate there. Yes, the city gave them tax increment incentives as well as tons of infrastructure perks, but that was probably worth it as the Action Target build jumpstarted the development of the rest of the industrial park. Example number three, when Questar bought a parcel of ground inside a residential neighborhood in Provost in order to build a transfer station, John Curtis went to bat for the neighborhood. At a meeting with the Questar guys, he reminded them that their own safety standards made such a location unwise. He directed the city's staff to get involved, and they did. The transfer station was relocated west of the cemetery in an industrial zone, which everyone agreed was a better place for it. Questar wasn't happy, having already purchased the land in the neighborhood, and they had to delay their project, which cost them money. But they agreed because the mayor threatened to oppose them, and the city staff promised to grease the wheels to get the thing built in the better location. Once again, the city getting involved produce a better outcome. Clout, yes, properly used clout. Okay, my time's up.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Other than the letters that we've received earlier?
Oh, Ms. Jensen, I just wanted to, for the record, read off the people that had actually submitted letters. So Alex Vaughn of Provo, Nicholas Zemp, Ted Bueller, and I think that's all. If I find any others, I'll let you know. I'll be, that's right.
I think there was a PowerPoint. Oh, the PowerPoint screen is not displaying currently. If you could re-display it, Robert. There we go, thank you. All right, is that all the public comment we have so far?
There's a phone call trying to call in, they're having a hard time connecting. So if you'll just give us a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Any questions, this is Gary. Any questions for us while that phone call's trying to connect? I think there may be a few phone calls attempting to call in tonight. So while they're doing that, if you have any questions. And as Robert said earlier, in a perfect world, we would try to separate these uses much better than they are now. This is not a good situation. And frankly, if the city council wanted to work with Christianson Oil and, and come up with money to help them move and work out a deal with that, that might be a, a good solution. However, we don't have any information or knowledge that the council's interested in that, doing that. So in trying to find a, the least bad solution of all solutions, this is what we came up with. To reduce some of the very dangerous uses that were permitted, while also allowing the, this tip, this current use on this particular site to remove some of the oil that they store in small totes, their little totes that just sit on the ground, and put them actually into metal tanks that are engineered and designed to hold combustible oil, which would clean up the site a little and make the site safer. And, and the only way they can do that is if we allow them to be a permitted use. And so that's kind of the rationale thinking behind it, is how can we make the site safer and eliminate absolutely unacceptable uses? So again, the perfect solution would be if there were a half mile in between residential and this particular use, but we're not there. And I don't know if we will be there. And so the, the least bad solution is the one that we've come up with.
Well, I think it's commendable that we're trying to make what is existing safer. There are other, I, I think they're M1, or they may be conditional use properties along 600 South that we've seen before the planning commission, who also had neighborhood opposition. They've been in place for a long time, they're opposite the rail yards. And so at one time, that was probably the logical location and the neighborhood and the, and the manufacturing zones kind of grew together.
Mm-hmm, that's exactly it.
So for now, you know, if, if we can pass or approve something that helps make an existing condition safer until such time that there's the political will and, and the cash, quite honestly, to make a change, this is at least something, a move in the right direction.
And this current site has a warehouse that fronts on 6 South. And at one time, a railroad spur went right up to that warehouse door. And so I'm sure that's why back in the 30s and 40s, that was located right here. And there was already at least one home existing on site, if not two or three, on that block when this use was allowed. We're currently looking for our zoning map to bring up and show you where the M1 zones are. Before we do that, Rachel did that caller connect?
Yes, now we'll bring them in.
Thank you.
510, go ahead.
Yeah, hello, this is 510.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay, the YouTube is lagging apparently, I will turn down my computer. Hello, this is Ted Bueller, I am a resident of Portland, Oregon, and a part resident of Provo, Utah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, hi. Thank you all for volunteering the time tonight to be on the planning commission to review plans and policies for Provo. I lived in the Mazer neighborhood in the 1990s. I studied botany and urban planning at BYU, and I bought a house here in 2005. It was sad and, sad and neglected, and I gave it a very nice restoration as an asset to the neighborhood. And I appreciate that Provo has a lot of good zoning and that zoning is set in place to separate incompatible land uses and to regulate what you can do with your land and to regulate what your neighbor can do with their land. And when I bought my house, I realized that the neighbor was grandfathered in and it was not necessarily a desirable land use, they are Christianson Oil. And over the 15 years I've had my house, they have expanded quite a bit, which is in, in accordance with the Provo City zoning. And that expansion reduces my quality of life. The stench of oil is stronger, there's more clutter in the yard, there's more gasoline trucks parked over the backyard fence. They just got one new gasoline truck last month, bringing their total stored gasoline on site to 130,000 gallons. And this lowers my quality of life and lowers the flow of the waste my presence and increases the fire risk. So I don't support the stench in zoning. I don't see this being a, much of a win-win situation at all. I don't see very much of a trade-off. They don't have space to add more oil tanks. They tried to add more oil tanks a year ago, but the city stopped them partly because of the zoning, but also partly because of the situation. There wasn't enough space on site to put it there. And so if you guys are going to consider passing this, I think that you should certainly get more information from the neighborhood and you should look more carefully into other options such as finding another spot for this in a location that's properly zoned, M2. Thank you. And Rachel Faverro is here also. Okay, I, I will hand my phone to Rachel, is that okay?
That's fine. And she needs to
Hello, okay, great.
Please state her name for the record.
Okay, my, I am Rachel Faverro, I'm a resident of Provo. You saw it in a home adjacent to Christianson Oil. My concerns with Christianson Oil first began when I would open my curtains from my bedroom to welcome the day and see a worker smoking as he was transferring hoses from a tank, you know, a truck into a tank. And, you know, I obviously don't have an in-depth understanding of flammable points and all these things, but just know enough that that concerned me, and that's when I began asking questions. So that, you know, that brought me to the fire department, who was able to explain some things. And since then, Christianson Oil has done things like talk to their workers and put up no smoking signs around their yard. So I appreciate, you know, getting some education on those things and the willingness to make some improvements in safety throughout their facility. But unfortunately, that's not enough in, in asking questions and trying to learn more. We, I familiarized myself with things like the fire code, which said that there had to be separation of certain items. Pellets and junk away from silos and temporary storage, like the crates and the different barrels around. I was one of the neighbors that was present during the walk-around tour of Christianson Oil, and I asked Mr. Christiansen, and I'm representative, representative from the fire department specifically, that if they were, the, you know, what's being presented is that it will be more safe if the materials are moved from these temporary storage into greater things. And so I asked if we would be getting, you know, assurances that then they wouldn't just bring in more product into these temporary things. And Mr. Christiansen said, no, these are safe. Why would we need to not do that? And of course, we're allowed to continue expanding. So it concerns me that we're being presented with benefits while not being presented with actual safety measures. You know, you're acknowledging that this is an unsafe, an ideal situation without solutions. Okay, Rachel, that's my turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we do have a YouTube comment. This is from Carolina Allen of the Mazer Neighborhood. She says, "Provo is proposing to allow bulk petroleum storage in M1 zones. Does this mean Christianson can store as much oil as they like? I was under the impression we're zoned for light manufacturing. Safety was an issue for us neighbors, yes, but so is the concern that businesses such as Christianson are being favored over neighborhood concerns."
Thank you. Any other comments, Rachel?
There is that lag in YouTube, so let's give them There is that lag in YouTube, so let's give them about a minute to see if there's any more comments.
I'll let you be the timekeeper.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions that staff can answer? I think Robert has a map, while we're waiting to see more comments or see if somebody's calling in, to show you some of the M1 zones, we're bringing up our, our zone map.
And just to clarify, Mr. McGinn, we are not rezoning, we are just changing the text of the existing zoning.
Correct.
Yes, I think there was some misunderstanding about that.
Yes. And then, any of the fire code issues, I believe, our Fire Marshal Lynn Schofield is still on the line and can address those. Can you see the zoning map?
Yes.
Okay. So Robert, will you walk them through and show the M1 area and the M2 area, right adjacent to the Mazer neighborhood?
So this is, you can see my cursor, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is M1 area, and then across the railroad tracks, this is the M2, the heavy manufacturing zone. It actually extend, the M1 area extends a little bit farther east along 600 South, and then this area right here at the corner, kind of where the cemetery is. And then, I think there's a little bit right in here, next to the freeway, kind of the Draper Lane 11th West area, in there. And then up here, by the freeway again, by the freeway again.
They're all along the tracks?
Yeah, primarily, I think there's some down here as well, in Mountain Vista, just one second. A little bit along here. Again, right next to the railroad tracks.
We do have another YouTube comment, if we have time?
Yes, please.
Okay, Oliver Callis from Provo. How did they come to storing so much oil in temporary storage totes in the first place? Why should we allow them more tanks when they have already expanded beyond their limit? What guarantee do we have that they won't continue to add temporary totes after adding new large tanks?
All right, thank you. Ms. Breen, did you want to hang on for any more public comments?
Okay, I'm seeing if, I'm typing to see if there's any other public comments, we'll see if anyone responds.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
As you were pointing out, other M1 zones in the city, do any of them abut residential neighborhoods the way that the M1 zone along 6th South does?
So if, if you can see my cursor right now, this is a very small M1 zone. And then this is, this is primarily residential area, RC is residential conservation. So the very nature of an M1 zone, there's an implication that it's not as intensive, you know, but still a great deal of latitude in what's allowable there. For reference, this is, this is the Mountain Vista Business Park down here, and so that's where that M1 zone is. Any other questions about that, or anything?
Well, just from a no doubt perspective, I think the obvious hazardous material threat to anybody downtown is the railroad itself. You know, that's where you're going to have the most dangerous hazardous materials, and they come and go as the trains pass.
A good point.
And that was an excellent point, actually.
Yeah, I believe if you talk with the fire department, and Lynn can back this up, I think they are much more concerned about what the railroad companies bring through our town than what's happening on, in, in the, than what is allowed in M1 zones.
That, that's my thought. I think this is more restrictive, and I think it's a nice accommodation that both sides have tried to move toward each other. Yeah, it's not a perfect fit, but that business has been around since 1935.
Okay, I have one, I thought I had read it, but maybe I missed it. It was from Carolina Allen of the Mazer Neighborhood, talking about, "Provo is proposing to allow bulk petroleum storage in M1 zones. Does this mean Christianson can store as much oil as they like? I was under the impression we're zoned for light manufacturing, and safety was an issue for us neighbors, yes, but so is the concern that businesses such as Christianson are being favored over neighborhood concerns." And then we had the one from Oliver Callis that I had read about the temporary totes added after, after adding new large tanks. And then, let me see, Melanie McCord asking about the southeast area plan, calling for it to be discontinued, and wondering about Beasley Monument. And so, right now, the comments are kind of all over the place, and it's hard to tell which ones I've read and which ones I haven't.
Rachel, what was the part about Beasley Monument?
It just, Melanie McCord was missing, she just wrote, "What about Beasley Monument?" Maybe this was, it's, it's hard to tell because there's such a lag in the YouTube, so it's hard to know exactly, maybe it was when you were showing the map of the different areas?
I think she was trying to point out where the M1 zones were.
Oh, okay.
I was watching when those comments came in, and I think it was when he was going through the map, trying to find each of the zones.
Thank you, Lisa.
It might be, it might be useful for staff to, and also Mr. Scoville, if appropriate, to discuss how this property, how code enforcement works for M1. I'm hearing a lot of concerns about the quantity of materials stored there, the type of containers used for storage.
I would be, I would be happy to, to discuss that. I'd like to, I'm going to try and keep this brief, but I'd like to just kind of give you a couple of perspectives. And the first one, we're going to do code enforcement 101 in 30 seconds or less. So when you look at this specific site property, if you went and divided the number of years that it's been since you took, set down roots at this property to 2020, and divided that by three, you would find the number of different fire code iterations that happened over that period of time. So on the current Christianson property, there are a multitude of different fire codes that are in place. The fire code principally is a building and maintenance code. And so, you know, when we start talking about fire code, there's multiple different iterations, it changes all the time. The second thing, and this is just more education, and I apologize, our, our hope had been to take this out to the neighborhood as a whole, prior to coming to planning commission, but there was a pandemic thrown in the, in the mix that kind of, kind of fouled that up. But when you look at this from a, from the perspective of code enforcement, the responsibility of the authority having jurisdiction, which is my boss, and I am his agent, is to ensure that every business in Provo, whether it's Christianson Oil, or Starbucks, or Costa Vida, are operating within a reasonable margin of safety, protecting life and property from fire and environmental damage. And that's our, that's our position. The fire code is not obliged to go out and beat different businesses up about, you know, their operating practices. So I have, as I mentioned before, in October, I did a detailed inspection of Christianson Oil. Are there things that they could work on? Yes. Did any of those things rise to the level of being issued a fire code violation? They did not. We hear about, talking about pallets. Yeah, they can have a pallet in their yard, they can have a couple of pallets in their yards. The question, the question becomes, does it inhibit their ability to provide a reasonable degree of fire and life safety? Now, the totes, the plastic totes of, that are being discussed or thrown around, or bantered about, those are new and different grades of lubricating oils. When I was a young man, I took, went to change the oil in my car, I went to the, to the auto parts store, I bought a few bottles of 10W-30 oil, I changed the oil in my car, I safely disposed of the old oil, and my options in the auto parts store were 10W-5, 10W-20, 10W-30, and 10W-40. When I take my vehicle to get a service now, there, there's a page and a half of lubricating oils that they can put into my car, that are all kinds of synthetic blends. So the, the totes that Mr. Christianson has are new, as technology changes, lubricating oils. One of the challenges that he has is he still has people that come in and looking for their 10W-5 and 10W, 10W-30 oil. So technology has advanced and continues to advance. This proposal would allow lubricating oils to be stored as a permitted use. It would most likely move forward, the building permit application, for seven new lubricating oil tanks that would remove a third to a half of those plastic totes, because they would be stored up in the steel tanks on a containment pad. From a fire safety point of view, I prefer that a lot more than the plastic totes. I much prefer permanent mounted tanks rather than portable storage, but just like every other industry, technology continues to advance, both, including in Mr. Christianson's business, and he's got to keep up with the technology. I don't see, I was in his office before I, I left town, he doesn't foresee adding any more flammable liquid storage. Really, he makes his, his bread and butter of the lubricating oils. And, and we both agree that there is not an infinite amount of space on his yard. He's got to, he's got to maintain some setbacks, he's got to maintain some fire clearances, he's got to maintain some fire lanes, to operate functionally and to, to be in compliance with the fire code. And, and I think that this text amendment provides all of us with that reset point to start to work together civil, civilly again. Again, this, this particular issue with Christianson Oil has been going on for 20 years. It, it manifested itself when I was first appointed the fire marshal 12 years ago. It's been going on a long time. There is a ton, a ton of false and misleading information that's been distributed throughout the neighborhood regarding the fire code. Last Friday, somebody posted a video of an exploding truck, I mean, just unhelpful stuff that has put people on edge, that's not, that, it's not based in fact. So what we would, what we would hope to do is to advance this forward to the city council, have this reset, and then work with the neighborhood. We started the seeds, we planted the seeds to be able to get the neighborhood back in, working with Christianson Oil to make the neighborhood safer for everybody. Christianson Oil has no desire to foul up the neighborhood, they have a desire to be a good neighbor, and by and large, they are a good neighbor. So that's, that's my opinion. I, I still favor this, this is the, this is the sow, this is the silk purse out of a sow's ear, or a lemonade out of lemons. In a perfect world, this wouldn't occur, but we're not in a perfect world, it's here, it's been here, it's been here for over 20 years. This is a good opportunity for us as a city to kind of reset the parameters, to move it forward, because honestly, I don't see the city having the resources to be able to relocate Christianson Oil. That's a, that'd be wonderful, but it's going to cost a lot of money, and presently, that's not a, not a viable option. I would answer, any other questions?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think I have a follow-up, but maybe it's better directed to Mr. Mills?
Please.
Just also along the lines of, and I realize we're making an adjustment to a big part of this, but the expansion of the existing use of the property, and how that maybe gets policed going forward in terms of the scale of the operation. Any thoughts about that?
Dave, can you ask the first part of your question again, sorry?
Yeah, from a zoning perspective, what limitations can be placed on the site to try to address some of the concerns that area residents raised about? Just additional activity on the property, maybe it's additional storage, or additional traffic, or just additional things that, that would be viewed as an expansion going forward? Is there anything that would give the city some ability to police that and keep that in check?
Dave, this is Gary, do you mind if I step in?
No, please, please, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a text amendment going to the council, and if the concern is about the site and how much they can have and things like that, and locations, et cetera, the council, I could see where the council or the planning commission could be hesitant to make a recommendation if they don't feel comfortable about the outer parameters of what could happen on the site. And I take it that's part of your concern. And so, one of the things that could happen is to have a development agreement that could occur, just outlining the future use of the site and what could happen with it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But, but to kind of give, I understand the concern that someone may have of, well, is this unlimited, how much can be here? Lynn talked about some of the practical functional limitations that could be on a site, and some of that could eventually be put down into some sort of agreement that, with the site plan showing, well, we have to keep fire lanes here, we have to do this, we have to do that, and so no more storage in these areas, those types of things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense, that, that just made me think of one other thing. I'm not a big fan of conditional uses. Did you talk at all about that, or have you guys given that any thought as maybe an alternative to the permitted use?
Yes, we have thought about it. Conditional uses can be a, a good tool when there are appropriate conditions and understanding the scope of what those conditions might be. Part of the problem with it is, when we do a conditional use, if we haven't put in all of the, well, let me take a step back, conditional uses are presumed to be approved.
Correct.
Unless they are found to be dangerous to health, safety, and welfare of surrounding properties. Well, the health, safety, welfare... Well, the health, safety, welfare issue really is the fire code issues here. And it's Provo City's view that, that actually this amendment makes things safer uh, overall for people. And so uh, not knowing what, exactly what conditions we could put on or should put on, uh, we just thought actually doing it as a permitted use. And then if there were a concern about what the actual limitation of how much oil could be stored on site or where they could be stored, uh, might be better as a development agreement or an agreement with Christianson Oil at some point. Does that make sense? But to beforehand, think of what the conditions would be. And to put it in, it'd be somewhat difficult to do that.
Which is, which is kind of what we did in this case in separating out the combustible materials versus the flammable materials. There's obviously, you know, some health, welfare, and safety that goes along with flammable materials that we could place some specific conditions, and that's why we are recommending those be a conditional use.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And I guess my, um, I'm really, really comfortable with the direction that staff's gone with this. It seems to be the most practical way to come up with something that works as best as it can. Um, I think it's been said several times. Um, I am somewhat sympathetic though, certainly to people that live in the area that um, I think reasonably should expect that it's not going to continue to grow over time. And, and that's, for me, that, uh, like the uh, gentleman representing the, the fire side of it said, um, I, I wouldn't necessarily personally be as concerned about dangers associated with the material that's there. But for me, maybe it's just more noise and more traffic or different things like that that are maybe tied to growth and expansion and things like that that might be worth, you know, trying to, to keep in check over time. But that's, I appreciate um, you guys sharing those thoughts.
And, and we, we agree. We understand those concerns and, and I think they're uh, honest and legitimate concerns. Uh, as you've probably been able to tell, as staff, we've struggled with this.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't see a great, perfect solution that's going to make everybody happy here, other than the city coming up with uh, lots of money to move Christianson Oil. Um, and, and so again, this is the best of the worst, the best, worst solution we can come up with.
Okay, we have some public comments.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a YouTube comment from Tabitha Buhler of Provo. She asks, "Do we have any assurance that the portable storage will be reduced? Or can there be just as much portable storage in addition to the new permanent storage?" And then we also have a call-in listener.
Hello?
Hello, 340. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Sam Omen. I'm the uh, Vice Chair of the Neighborhood Mar, uh, Area. Am I, am I on?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and if the chair is not present, that gives me five minutes instead of two, but two's probably enough. Uh, there's a number of issues that don't relate to the oil and relate to the trucks going through the neighborhood, and that's been improved magnificently, and it's been improved several times in the past and then slips back. And when I say a, a double ta, trailer tanker truck uh, coming up my street where I live, uh, doesn't even stop at the stop sign and goes down through the residential area, happening four times a day or more, uh, now that seems to have been taken care of. But uh, the customers that go there are, are driving semi trucks. And uh, they go through the residential area. Sometimes they park on the residential street and stay all night because they're going to pick up a load in the morning. If it snows, all of the snow on that property uh, gets plowed across the street in a pile, takes up the parking for somebody else's yard. And then the parking that normally on that street ends up in the middle of the street. That is because the lot is so full right now, there's no spot to shovel your snow. Now, there are some issues uh, technically with, technically with the fire code that I think need to be addressed. But the bigger issue is there hasn't been a meeting general, for the general uh, neighborhood. There's been a few privileged meetings where some people have been invited and some people were kicked out. And there all should be a neighborhood meeting to at least educate the neighborhood and let the neighborhood uh, go over the details of, of what's going on there. Uh, the idea that we're going to put the problem of everything in the thing on the back of the development director is kind of sad because the law is written and then the lobbyists come in and can uh, put pressure on the development director to change whatever in it. That's uh, that's pretty bad policy. You know, that gets Boeing out of the air business. Uh, and I say that because that's been my work experience. But I would request that we postpone the uh, decision on this until the neighborhood can actually meet together. We're in the middle of a pandemic. Everybody's made a little sacrifice. And uh, maybe we could sacrifice a couple of weeks or maybe months uh, before we make the decision so that the neighbors can get together. Uh, it's been suggested we meet at the park where we have social distancing and uh, go over this. Frankly, I don't think it's a bad idea to rezone. But when you have the M1 zone required everything within a building, that's all, all a business, and none of their business is done within a building except storage. That's an interesting part. And we, I'll, I'll turn my time back over to you. And thank you so much, you guys, for, for the work on this. And thank you for the city staff. They've been, well, we may have disagreements, but it's been a, a productive and, and fun time for all of us, I'm sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Rachel, any others?
I did a last call and no one has responded for YouTube comments.
Okay. So I think uh, we've had quite a few and we've had letters as well. And I think we have a pretty good feeling for the public comment side of things. So I think we'll close this now to public comment and.
May I interject briefly?
Mr. Schofield.
So I, I, I sympathize um, with Sam. He and I had a, a nice discussion on, on Monday evening before I left town. Um, I, I commit to you that if we, if we move this forward, which is still my recommendation, that I will, with my boss and with other, well, myself and my boss, we'll go out to the neighborhood and we'll discuss these issues. It was fully our intention to do that. Um, and so I fully commit that we are, we don't consider this to be a done process. We consider this to be a step in the right direction and the beginning of a relationship where peace in the neighborhood can be had. As far as the other vehicles that are, that are coming to the Christianson Oil route, the finalized hazardous material, materials routes, um, were just finalized at the um, middle of March in the um, transportation master plan. We are working to get those out, um, but it's going to take us a little bit of time. And I will try and be quiet for the rest of the time.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Right, I will turn this back over to commissioners for further discussion, uh, motion. Any questions for staff?
Well, Madam Chair, it seems to me like uh, uh, they're going to get another bite of the apple with the council if we forward the recommendation, and the council may have a prospective offer of their own.
Very true.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, I just want to say, um, if we forward this to the council, can we forward it um, with a delay so that the neighborhood has a chance to talk about it before the council hears it?
You can make a recommendation on this item to the council. And in your recommendation, you can say, uh, we recommend approval or denial of this and that you allow something to happen. A neighborhood meeting or something like that. Yes, you could do that.
Thank you.
That would mean we wouldn't have to hear it all again after a meeting.
I'm sorry?
That would mean we wouldn't have to have it come to the planning commission again after they're able to have a public meeting.
Correct.
I just um, had a few thoughts that I wanted to respond to some of the concerns. Uh, maybe their questions. Um, I feel like the severity of this land use, the, the number one thing is that we don't want it to intensify. We want to be able to regulate what's already there, but we don't really want it to be able to expand. Am I understanding that correctly? That this is not to enable expansion? It's to enable that the things that are done improve what's already being used?
I, I think so. I think that the, the neighborhood doesn't want an expansion and wants it to be safer. I think Christianson Oil would say, we don't want, uh, we want it to be safer. At the same time, if there is a new lubricating oil that the market is now demanding with technology, there's a new type, and we needed to now have that type of lubricating oil to provide for our customers, we don't want to be prohibited from doing that. And it's trying to balance those two desires.
Is there some way that they can just not be able, okay, so we don't provide that weight of oil anymore? Like, at some point, can we just say, you actually have enough of the market and we're not going to let you expand your business anymore?
Well, sure, as, as the city comes in with its regulations, you could say, you know, you can't do any of this type of thing and in, no uh, petroleum storage at this site. And it's just non-conforming and all of that. Uh, so that's the difficulty with this situation is how do we try to accommodate a neighborhood? Well, we've got a terrible situation somewhat caused by the city. Back in 35, when there are homes here, we allowed uh, petroleum storage and use to occur. It's now been happening for decades and um, is now non-conforming there. So we've got a, a, a business here that every time they, in our estimation, want to make the site safer by putting in some of uh, new tanks to take away some of the totes. And I get the, the issue of, well, but does that mean all the totes that are there? Uh, if they take away some and put them in new tanks, those old totes are now just going to appear with more oil and more and more. I understand that. And we're trying to look for a way to balance those two competing interests of the neighborhood in this bad situation that we wish, nobody wishes were the case.
I would also, I would also just jump in and say, there are obviously some physical constraints about the specific site.
All right.
And um, you, you know, eh, some expansion may be possible. But at the same time, this is a business that's competing in a, in a very competitive market. And they're going to have to continue to provide a, a, a service. But also, they need to provide a site where their customers can get what they need efficiently and they can get their product out efficiently. And so it, it's kind of that, it's kind of that yin and yang of, they might be able to have more space for more product, but does that still make them as competitive at getting that product out?
And they still need to meet fire code issues for fire lanes and fire access and all of those things. So you couldn't have a site that is all tanks.
Does that help, Lisa?
Yeah, I just, is there a limit in the zoning on how, like, the volume of flammable or combustible materials that they can store? Because that would also inhibit growth.
I don't think that there's something in the zoning code.
That would be a fire code thing?
We would rely on the fire code.
Okay.
And external, external storage of flammable and combustible liquids, I do not believe there is an upper limit. But I'll check.
Because that would, that would be an issue that would address some of the neighborhood concerns. The other concerns that were expressed were about other projects that were paid by the city to be relocated. And I don't feel like the nuisance provided by this site is similar to those. The odor that Cooney's was putting off was valley-wide, not just proximal. And the flammability of the Questar project was, I feel like, way, way more flammable than what we're proposing with or what Christianson already has. Am I correct in that, that understanding?
I would agree.
Yes, I would agree with that. And then the other uh, example was Action Target. If Christianson moved, then the question would be, what use would you put there?
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want residential there because then we'd be actually moving residential closer to the railroad tracks in the M2 zone there, which is not a good idea.
Okay, I just wanted to just sort of throw those things out there as a way to consider what the neighbors are concerned about and understand what the zoning and fire code will allow. Sorry to interrupt the motion that somebody wanted to make.
I have a question for Mr. Schofield. If Christianson were to build out that property, uh, to the ex, full extent that they could, uh, potentially, how many more tanks, um, and/or totes could they put on that property?
I would have to get back to you. Probably vertical tanks, they probably could put. Um, and this should just write, I'm looking at an aerial, aerial view thinking out loud. They could probably put in another dozen vertical tanks for lubricating oils. Um, as far as the totes, uh, we, we're like the neighborhood. We'd like to see the totes go away if we can. And certainly, we'd like to see them managed better, and we can work with them on that. Um, but presently, they're okay. Um, they don't have a ton of room left to build out and still maintain access for their trucks and trailers and fire access for us in the event of, of a problem. Um, but to uh, to kind of go back to Mr. Anderson's comment, uh, in speaking with Chief Miguel, one of the things, and why we like this text amendment as it is written, um, is because they're taking, they're only making lubricating oils a permitted use. Now, I'm going to use this rhetorically. This is no basis in fact. But um, from a fire safety standpoint, if they filled the rest of their lot with lubricating oils, we'd be quite comfortable with that. Um, because there is a large degree of safety and there's a very low degree of risk to the neighborhood from the lubricating oils. But I, you know, I don't think they're good, I don't think there's a ton left to build out. And I, and I do agree that there's going to come a time where the market's going to get away from conventional motor oils and just be in the synthetics. Um, but I think that could probably be part of a development agreement. Um, we're obviously going to enforce the fire code that applies to uh, their storage and their fire lanes and, and access like, and things like that.
Thank you.
So basically, at the end of the day, staff feels comfortable and Mr. Schofield that this text amendment makes the site safer.
Yes. That's how I see it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that's the bottom line of this. Um, yeah, it's not an ideal situation. But we've inherited it and that we can't legally do anything about it except control it through zoning. And the zoning's already in place. You can't downzone it at this point. And you probably wouldn't want to. Um, so this seems like a pretty good solution, given the circumstances.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Howard?
I'd like to move that we forward a positive recommendation to the Provo City Council for an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code Sections 14.27.
for an ordinance text amendment to Provo City Code Sections 14.27.020 and 14.27.080 relating to the permitted uses and yard requirements of the M1 light manufacturing zone as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second for Mr. Howard's motion as stated?
I would, I would like to add what was said earlier about having a neighborhood meeting. I know that that is very, very important to many residents of the neighborhood.
I'll amend my motion for that.
A second to the motion?
I just want to point out that his motion doesn't include conditional uses in it. I don't know if we needed to state that perfectly as it was written.
I just said as presented.
Okay. I just want to make sure. You hadn't read the text exactly as it was.
No.
Not the entire text. Do we need to reread that as the entire text, staff?
Please, no.
It is as presented with those specific amendments by Ms. Wisdom.
Okay.
Yep.
That's right.
Great. All right, and we had a second by?
Dave did it.
Dave.
Mr. Anderson, second?
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second as stated. All those in favor for a positive recommendation on Item 6 to Municipal Council? And I'll go through the rolls. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Knudson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, myself, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on Item 6 to Municipal Council.
With the recommendation that they'll also have a neighborhood meeting.
Yes, that was included as part of the motion.
And that's, that is an implied meeting that happens before they go to the council, right?
And we take that, that it's, that before the council would take final action, that your recommendation is that before the council takes final action, there is a neighborhood meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you for that certification.
Great.
All right, so we are on to Item 7, which is also legislative. Item 7, the Provo City Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests amendments to Section 14.34.295, Downtown Development Design Standards, to clarify architectural requirements in the downtown zones. Says citywide application, and Mr. Mills will present Item 7.
Hey, thank you. Yes, it is citywide, but there's only one downtown. Just as kind of a brief summary, Planning Commission actually recommended approval on this item back on September 11. Since then, it has not gone to council yet because we were working on some additional things that we wanted to insert in there, so we brought it back to you. So updates, there are exceptions allowed, that that was an original part. In an effort to allow the Planning Commission to move more towards planning items rather than administrative items, we've put in the verbiage that any exceptions would be approved by the Development Services Director based on specific criteria and also after being considered by the Design Review Committee. And then there are specific requirements that have been added for pedestrian building entrances for office buildings. Previously, it was just commercial structures and residential structures. And the required amount of openings, there was some pushback as far as an office building having that many public pedestrian building entrances along the street. Still, still maintaining the same facade requirements and all of those things, but just the number of entrances became a little bit problematic for office buildings. Those are the things. Let me, because the text is so long, I didn't want to add it all to the PowerPoint. And so we are eliminating the existing language that is there. Ms. Jensen, I know that you mentioned earlier about it's nice to have pictures. Unfortunately, in this particular case, the pictures were not helpful. And so those have been replaced and taken out. And then our new language is all the way down here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but basically the same as you've already recommended approval for.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Mills?
I found a type error in the text that might be important.
Oh, good.
Under the section balconies, I don't have a page number for you. It's 2B, and it says the design and of balconies and associated railings. I think there's a word missing there, or perhaps something?
Okay.
Anyway, just whatever it is you intended to say there isn't said.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify, so this ordinance just means that it's more obvious what the requirements are. There's less debate and less interpretation, and it enables the Planning Commission to not have to make all of the decisions that we're not qualified to make. Is that correct?
That's a good summation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, how much of this does staff want to get into? Yeah, I'll call them concerns. The language in the document is pretty eclectic, I'd say. It's a mix of a few different things. Some parts of it are really aspirational. And, you know, kind of subjective in terms of how it would be interpreted and applied and that sort of a thing. And yet, in other areas, it's really explicit with, you know, down to measurable requirements and that type of a thing. I know that this has been reviewed even in recent years, and it's been updated and adjusted and that type of a thing. But is there, is this a time to where staff would be willing to take a deeper dive on the document? And if, in my mind, it's kind of just picking a direction. Do we want to be more advisory with the overall tone and that type of a thing? Or do we want to tighten it up to where it's much more objective? So that's, that's a long question, but...
I think that's a very good question, Mr. Anderson. And I would say this, this language seems to improve upon and give a little bit more clarity to what's established in there already. And one of the advantages of hopefully freeing up a little bit of time for the Planning Commission to work on planning items is that maybe this could, this is something that the Planning Commission could tackle and say, really, what are the best type of design standards that we want to have for our downtown? What's really important to us? And so maybe as a, in a concerted combined effort with Planning Commission and staff, we could come up with something that would improve upon this.
Okay.
Does this, do you feel this fills a gap that needs to be filled for the interim? Because it sounds like you're talking about what would be a process.
Correct.
Yeah.
This, this process was started a few years ago to kind of, at the feedback of city, city staff and the development community based on some standards that seemed a little bit even more difficult to follow and to really understand. And so the premise of this was to provide a little bit more refinement. But it's an iterative process, obviously, so
Yeah.
we might not be there yet.
Well, I, I know from experience, it's very difficult to write regulatory language like this for buildings and urban design. Some things are quantifiable easily. For example, X percent of ground floor facades must be clear glazing. That's a formula you can just sit down and do the math. Other things like, oh, well, you need to follow existing cornices or stepbacks, or, you know, you get into kind of loosey-goosey territory where there aren't how many, there aren't precise measurements. It's more open to interpretation, which is not a bad thing. Because you don't want to, you don't want to end up with a Disneyland effect, right? You want to allow for individuality, although you want overall cohesiveness. So it looks like it all hangs together. So it's kind of the nature of the document that you're going to have a little bit of both kind of language.
Right.
Yeah. And our long-term goal with this, or, you know, strategy over time is to have the Planning Commission work more on what the ordinances really should say and what we're trying to achieve and accomplish, and then allow staff to implement those. And rather than Planning Commission dealing with a lot of, you know, administrative items where there's not a lot of discretion, focus time on those. And I think this one is one that we would say is probably rather push this one along to council while we are working on, and hopefully here in a little while, we'll be able to come back with a text amendment that would really help Planning Commission change our code so that Planning Commission can focus on these big picture items while the implementation of them are done more by staff. But then, as staff, we would come back and show you what we've done with those to make sure we're accomplishing the vision that you have.
Gary, I think you just talked me into wanting to take more time with this as that big picture item, you know, that, you know, this is the time for us to, to be thorough with it. And then we walk away, right? Staff implements it, and we don't revisit it hopefully again for several years. Now, I don't know what that would mean necessarily. We might not need to spend a lot of time with this. There are a couple of things that I'd like to take a closer look at. There are things that I've, I've expressed concerns about before. And other Commissioners, you guys might think this is totally ready to move on, and if that's the case, I'll happily go along with that.
I would just, I would just also add the caveat that there is some development potential in the interim that these specific standards might be beneficial to help guide that while we're still going through it. But that's at the discretion of the Planning Commission and the council.
That was actually my question, is are there pressing projects that this would help address some deficiencies we've seen in the past for the interim? And yeah, I mean, nobody wants to go over a document 15 times. So I totally hear you, Dave, that we haven't quite gotten it perfect yet. But just wondering if there's some things, something or some projects. There's a lot of development going on around downtown that this might have immediate impact on in a good way.
Well, I've understood that we'd take the position at this point, certainly with it being discussed like it is tonight, that it's pending legislation and that, you know, staff can hold folks to this particular standard with any applications that are made while this is under consideration. I think probably for up to a year, certainly up to six months.
Our ordinance says six months.
Okay. So that, that might help in the immediate.
But the problem is, this ordinance, how, when did it first appear on the Planning Commission agenda?
I think the first time was like back in 2002.
It's been a while, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. And so that, that's, and I just wanted to make sure with Robert for that. And that's why, in the interim, I think this helps us to pass it now more than it hurts us, and we can come back and revisit this in the future.
Like I said, I'm, I'm comfortable with that concept. It also seems to me like the coming back and revisiting part is something we struggle with. I think that's a function of just workload and different things like that, for sure, but...
Does it send?
That's right.
The things we're trying to accomplish is having the Planning Commission focus more on these types of issues rather than those administrative items over which you have very little and no discretion.
One of which you endured earlier this evening.
Right, right.
Does it inadvertently send the message that we are changing our minds frequently if we approve or recommend something for approval now and then in a few more months do it again with more edits, like we can't get it right?
I would.
Or is it better to just?
This would be like a year or so.
Yeah, I, I think they'd be thrilled to have something to start chewing on. By the time it gets back to us, it'll be another year.
You mean like gristle?
Yes.
Like to chew on for a long?
You've been at my house before.
Or like gum that loses its flavor?
Like cud?
Yeah. I, I understand. I think we'd all like to sit around and smooth this out. And I would probably defer a lot to the three people on this commission with the experience to lead us the way. But, you know, I'm coming up at the end of my three years, and I think, I think I started with this, so that's why I say what I say.
It's been around for a while.
Yeah. And, and, and I think that woven in this, and I don't know, you all have to tell me, but it appears to me, a lot of those, those discussions have found their way in there. That table's part of that. I remember seeing that. So I, you know, there has been development. It's just hard to perceive when it happens at this pace.
There's a lot of good stuff in here.
Incremental improvement, I guess.
Yeah, I'm of the move. Generally, when stuff like this happens, I believe an 80% plan is better than a no% plan. And I just mean like, we're never going to get that 20% in the reasonable future.
Dave, are there any holes in it that would make you worried about this being the enacted document?
You know, I need to be real clear. I'm only speaking for myself here. I think I might be a big outlier, even more so than on some other things. But it's almost more like pet peeves. The idea of building placement and how close that can be to a sidewalk, balconies hanging over public rights of way, just different things that I think in other communities are handled very differently. And some of the things that have been built in Provo, I think, meeting these standards in the recent past caused me some concern. Again, I think I'm, I might be on my own with some of those concerns, but yeah, I do have a couple of particular things that I'd love to, to discuss in more detail.
Because if this was applied citywide, there would be some serious problems. But for the downtown, it felt fairly consistent with what we see down there. But once again, I'm a newcomer, so I haven't had a lot of projects come before me from downtown. I don't have all the pet peeves you have yet. But soon.
Give it time.
Someday.
Maybe not, maybe not. Well, yeah, honestly, in terms of the timing, we're really fortunate to have Deborah as a resource. So as long as she's available, I'm happy to, to be a part of pushing this onto the council now. But I'd love to, to make this a priority. We've also talked about doing some work on the general plan. It seems like that's another priority.
But those all require lots of time and in-person visits?
I think the general plan, certainly, this probably quite a bit less, but I think some methodical discussion, or maybe post-social distancing and that type of a thing, but hopefully not, not waiting another six months to get into this. I think it'd be good.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. Unfortunately, what happens is we get slammed with other things and then these kinds of issues get put on the back burner, like with the general plan. The general plan, in retrospect, I think is too big of a piece of steak for us to try to chew on. Uh it's it's a huge undertaking. Um and I think, I think we started to realize that just getting into the preliminaries of going through that document. Um.
But I think to Gary's point, you know, and um I've yeah, I'll use tonight as an example. The seven hundred and sixty-three apartments that for the most part was an administrative thing that ended up chewing up a whole lot of time. Yeah, we'd be rather spend our time on other things. And I think we've kind of decided that um we probably could use our time more beneficially if we weren't dealing with those kinds of things. And I think that, Gary, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think that's kind of what you're trying to get us to to move away from, right?
Yeah, I I look at tonight, that earlier item tonight that that took a lot of valuable time from this committee and the committee members to sit through that hearing when the vast majority of it really is administrative things and and talking about, you know, the issue that came up about um uh parking reduction. That, you know, and some of the the different points of view that were raised on that, I think the planning commission would have better spend their time talking about parking.
Right.
Ratios in the community and what should we really do and how should we really do it? And establishing it and then letting staff administer it rather than coming back on, you know, what, well, we have a standard, but not really. And you know, maybe really figure out what our standard should be.
I think though, I mean, yeah, we spent a lot of time tonight talking about that item. But I think that when we do, there are some good questions that come out of it. And I think every time we do talk about something like that, we kind of learn maybe a little bit about what we envision for Provo and what we don't want to see happen. Um I'm not saying that it's always a valuable use of our time, but I think that we kind of learn from each other. And then if we didn't talk about it, then we wouldn't have the value of hearing each other's opinions.
And that's why I think as an important part of this would be uh presentations or updates from staff of what the result of these ordinances that you've worked on have been. And so you can see projects, you know, that would be an important part of this is updating the planning commission on on the effects of those uh decisions uh to enact certain ordinances and how they're working.
So if I under, so if I'm hearing you right, you're so the effects of those decisions, are you saying that we'd have to wait until after that apartment complex is built to see? And then get a report back on whether or not the parking reduction worked? Is that what I'm, eh, did I understand that right?
No, there's, there's lots of different uh par- uh projects in town that are built with different parking ratios that we could come and give. And when we're talking about parking ratios, we could come and uh show the planning commission what the results of those ordinances were to help you make decisions. And then after you pass an ordinance, then we would update you on the projects that would come in.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the important part of that would be to kind of elevate the planning commission's per, you know, perspective to really talk about the policy rather than specific projects that are already, you know, subject to very specific regulations that you really don't have a lot of latitude in um making adjustments on. But if you spend the bulk of your time talking about the policies of why maybe a parking reduction is important or or things like that, that gives you a lot of, a lot more influence to actually see those changes that you want to see and that you've talked about in in several meetings and with several projects.
Well, I think, I think the commissioners would be very pleased to deep dive into some of these topics that come up repeatedly as in tonight on parking. And what's appropriate, if you're getting a reduction in parking and you say there's transit there, is it okay to turn a blank eye to the street? And I think all, a lot of us reacted to that. Maria's point that there was no access that was proximal to the transit station. You had to go all the way halfway down the block to exit the building. And and yeah, I understand the security concerns, but you know, there are a lot of issues like that that we could be addressing. We see enough stuff come up in presentations from developers. We we're, we know when we see the good stuff and we know when we see the stuff that we're like, what? No, we're not buying that story. Um and I think that would help us uh eh eh it'll bring another perspective to going through some of these documents and trying to understand, you know, all the forces at play and to make them better if we can.
And this is gonna maybe just come from left field, but eh I can't remember exactly how long I've been on the commission, maybe three years now. Um but I'm amazed that we haven't as a group ever gotten together and, you know, taken a walk around a particular part of the city or something like that and spent our time eh eh, you know, just talking about what we see and, you know, maybe what we feel has been more successful or less and what we'd like to see, you know, perpetuated or not and different things like that. And eh I think it's largely because we've spent our time doing a lot of other things. Um eh eh, in my experience, we spend as much time serving the community and as planning commissioners in Provo as people do in just about any community, but I don't think we cover as much ground as some other commissions are able to just because of how uh the workload's been set up.
I know, Liz offered to set up a a tour, you know, going around and talking about different projects and and things like that. Um but probably because of time and you know, trying to coordinate staff schedules and our schedules. You know, for one reason or another, it's hasn't happened, not laying the blame at anybody's feet, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Well, one of the things that we did, I used to be on the board for AIA, um the Central Utah section here in Provo. And um I was the only urban designer on the team, so I wasn't so interested in building tours. Well, they're interesting, but you know, I tried to bring along urban design tours also. We did do a walking tour of downtown Provo. And um, you know, it's kind of, it's an opportunity to kind of give everyone on the tour uh a class in Urban Design one O one, you know. Why, why is it important that the building is on the edge of the street or that the windows are transparent or that the building stepped back, all those things? You know, and and walking around Provo, it's an easy thing to say, here's a great example. This example is all wrong. You know? It's, there's nothing like getting out and seeing examples. I I mean, we could maybe do that with a slideshow.
Yeah, I just mentioned that as as one example of of uh a way that I think we could work more on the policy side of things. Like Mr. Mills said. Yeah, yeah, I mean, eh, tonight, as we were talking about the first item, the the uh canopy coverage for parking areas, I was Googling things, looking at, you know, all different types of parking lot designs, you know, with the the low-impact development design kinds of things. There's just so much information out there that um we don't often, I feel like, get a chance really to talk about and bounce ideas off of one another. Um we we don't spend a lot of time in that kind of a forum.
Yeah.
I would say that eh, you know, this is really good discussion and I think it would be better in a study session.
Thank you. We are off topic, aren't we? Completely.
Bring you back.
Yes, let's, let's uh reel us, reel us back in. So I guess uh we haven't asked for any public comment on this yet, have we? Do we have any more questions on this topic right now? Or Mr. Mills or Mr. McGinn?
No.
See, we're all just missing human interaction. That's the problem. Or diversity of it.
Or it's ten o'clock and our brains are falling apart.
Uh too, yeah. Do um, Ms. Brain, do we have any public comments?
I don't have anything on YouTube right now, but let's give it a about thirty seconds.
Okay, so I will officially open item seven to public comment and we're waiting on YouTube feedback and or any callers.
There are no callers at the moment.
Okay. It's too bad we can't tell if anyone's actually logged into YouTube.
They've all gone to bed.
And we've been talking about this item for a long time and they could have.
There's, there's seven people watching YouTube right now. Of course.
Wow.
One of them's me.
And one of them's me. Those are great ratings. Wait, who would say that?
Okay, I'm still not getting any comments on YouTube.
Okay, then we will officially close item seven to public con comment and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion on point, please, on topic and or emotion.
I am willing to make a motion that we recommend this item for approval. Want me to formalize that?
Please, Ms. Jensen.
I'm finding it. Ah, where is it? Maybe not. Maybe someone else needs to take it from me.
Eh, that was formal enough for me. I'll second that.
The Provost says, let's see. That we amend section fourteen point three, four point two nine five downtown development design standards to clarify architectural requirements in the downtown zones.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Do we have a second for Ms. Jensen's motion?
Dave did it. Yes, yeah, sorry. Yep, I will second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation on item seven to municipal council. After I have to go down the list. Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Wynden.
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Knitson.
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item seven. So we have one last item tonight. Also legislative. The community, this is item eight. The Community and Neighborhood Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to chapters fourteen point thirty-three and fifteen point O five of the Provo City Code to update the development re, brra, development requirements of lands located within the special flood hazard area. Citywide application and Mr. Mills will present item eight.
Thank you. Home stretch.
Yay.
So again, this is an item that you've heard before, uh the November thirteenth, um maybe last year. Uh at that time, uh there were some proposals in there to change some of the language regarding um the setback requirements uh for the Provo River. Um those have those have just reverted back to what they originally were. Eh it's important that we actually um kind of move through this uh particular legislation because eh the bottom note there says this proposed ordinance has been updated to include the specific uh firm maps for Provo. Uh those were recently revised by FEMA and they have a June twenty twenty effective date. Um so we are, eh this update has uh actually included those specific ones eh and we have worked on um putting in language that eh is more in alignment with uh what FEMA requires. Just as a side note, eh again, iterative process. I I have a model ordinance from FEMA that I'll probably be working on to refine our our flood documents even more. And so I would expect you to see uh some additional updates uh in probably later in the year, but this is important to to get this one moving on to council so that we can be compliant uh with our flood insurance standards and and things like that. So we would recommend that you forward a positive recommendation.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this?
I don't have any questions. I just know that when you write policies like this, uh if if you've got something that's dependent on someone else's date, like a map or a chart, if you can put that eh in an addendum or just say the current uh FEMA map, something like that, then you're not having to constantly change the uh the ordinance.
Didn't the map change, Robert or Mr. Mills?
Uh the maps have changed slightly. Um and then eh to Mr. Howard's point, they will be changing again. Um there are current studies going on.
Sure.
To the the Provo River that are going to impact these maps as well as Utah Lake. Um so.
My my point was that in in whatever next iteration, when you write this up, can you put current, current, most current FEMA map or give it a reference so that you don't have to keep changing the date in the document because then that forces it to come back to us.
That is preferable from a, from a policy FEMA's kind of particular about.
I see.
To my understanding of actually adopting the map that they want you to.
Okay, well, maybe, no, no worries. This is in the weeds.
Hopefully this will be a a regular occurrence.
I have another question.
Ms. Jensen.
Um the staff report said that it was continued. Um or I should say that the report of action said it was continued because there were concerns about the hundred-foot setback and that they were going to wait for the public works and other things to come forward to to um to address that. But both versions of the document that are in this report seem to be identical in regard regards to the hundred-foot setback. Have those previous concerns from the November meeting been met?
So those previous concerns were brought up by um Ms. Ellsworth, when she was on the planning commission heard. She recommended that we have a significantly larger uh required setback from the Provo River. Uh currently, we have a requirement of a hundred feet. Um eh and there's the part of me that definitely agrees with, it would be wonderful to have two hundred to three hundred feet of of setback from the Provo River. The the actual probability and, you know, realisticness of that um is difficult to determine. Um so the other part of that was that um Mr. Rob Hunter from Public Works was working on some updates to the Stormwater Design Manual. And they wanted to wait until those designs had been completed and adopted. Uh that has occurred. And so eh the other, the other thing that you'll notice in in the text and in the the staff report is that we have actually moved the floodplain um development standards from a specific chapter in chapter uh in title fourteen uh to uh title fifteen now in the Sensitive Lands Ordinance. It it just be more sense to put it there and to make people aware of it. And so those were, those were kind of the things that we were working on and seemed to be um taken care of at this point.
So having not addressed that other concern, is that important for us to do or that wasn't really a a requirement for? So having not addressed that other concern, is that important for us to do or that wasn't really a, a requirement for revisiting it?
No, it's not really required.
Okay. I feel like it would be smarter to say um a certain height above the water line instead of a, a linear setback.
So I would just, I, I would just also add that that specific requirement doesn't necessarily relate to the floodplain. Uh, it's more of a flood fight. Um, provision that was inserted shortly after the eighty-three floods. So sometimes that, that actually extends beyond the floodplain.
Does FEMA regulate these distances anyway? So does that allow for building permits? Do they have to review any of them that are within a certain distance or is that all on us?
So FEMA, FEMA is only concerned with things that are in the one percent uh chance flood area, so, or you might have heard one hundred-year flood.
Right.
So that's the extent of their regulation. Our, our own internal regulations based on like stormwater design and, and those types of things um are much more stringent and actually carry into other areas that haven't been designated as a floodplain. Um, and so that's kind of how we, we.
Um, talking about that setback, I think that's actually a big deal for a few different reasons. Where is that measured from? Like the top bank? Some point there?
It says the high point of the bank of the Provo River.
Okay.
Which is something that moves.
That's right.
Yeah. What's allowed or not allowed in this setback?
Um, development is not permitted in that.
So does that mean it can't be part of like private property? So let's say that I've got fifty acres next to the river that I'm developing. Do I have to um exclude everything that's one, that within a hundred feet of that highest part of the bank?
That's correct. Property. It's still your property. You just, i- it's like a setback requirement.
But that.
You couldn't fence it. You, you might be able to put a slab of something down. But you can't have any structures or anything like that.
Which is probably more of like an aesthetic thing or something like that, right? Because that, that hundred feet wouldn't necessarily correspond at all with a, a floodplain, floodway kind of an issue.
One, one of the things they're concerned about is obstructions and debris getting caught on the obstructions and creating bigger problems.
And having that hundred feet, that gives you an opportunity to get in there and to maintain the channel, right? If
That's correct.
For the reason that you're talking about.
Do they have erosion control and um perhaps landca- landscape requirements for water quality purposes and runoff volumes? In that hundred-foot setback?
Um, no, let me, let me share this other screen with you really quick.
Sorry, here we are, still talking away.
These are really good questions. Um, so indeed, this is how we're this is mostly the, the existing language with one slight modification. So this is where it says no structure, earth fill, parking lots, connection with any industrial shall be within a hundred feet. Um, and then there's a slight provision that we're adding eh, to say that it can be adjusted uh with a minor modify, with a minor project plan. Uh, if it's part of a, a single-family structure or an accessory structure. Uh, it would be part of an, an approved project plan to modify that uh if it was a larger development. We've had several cases where um there's a, there's a potential for a single-family home to be on a, on a river lot. Uh, it's a, it's a lot of record. They want to come in and develop. Um, but given the setbacks of the front yard and, and the hundred-foot requirement, uh, they need like five extra feet. Um, in technicality, they couldn't, they couldn't be given that. Uh, even if, even if the elevation of the, the site was actually substantially above the, the floodplain elevation, this provision previously would have prevented that. We wanted to add a little bit of um leniency for very specific projects. And so that's why we put that.
And just, just as an aside, uh, any big project usually has a loan behind it. And lenders are required to get a, a flood certification for a home or a big project. And they have to ensure it if it falls within the hazardous floodplain, so that's just a education point.
That's correct. Any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Mills?
No.
Any uh public input on this? Ms. Breen?
Not yet, so we'll give it a little bit of time, see if anyone comes on.
No phone callers.
Thank you. So I'll say that we're officially open for public comment on item eight. I know it's a hot topic. And I guess we'll know shortly if we have anyone.
Yeah, no, um, no, just someone saying thank you for all your service during these trying times.
Oh, we appreciate your kind comments.
It's nice.
Very much. All right, I will close item eight to public comment then and turn it back to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
I'm game for a motion if Madam Chair.
Mr. Anderson?
Nobody else wants to jump in? I'll go ahead and move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt the language as proposed in attachment one to the staff report relating to chapters fourteen point three-three and fifteen point zero-five.
I'll second. Seconded by Ms. Wynden. All those in favor forwarding a positive?
That was Ms. Urkiaga, but yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did too, but anyways, it doesn't matter.
Lights up. Okay, so seconded by Ms. Urkiaga? All those in favor forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on item eight? Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Jensen?
Aye.
Ms. Wynden?
Aye.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Knitson?
Aye.
And Ms. Jensen, aye. So that's unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item eight to municipal council. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I was just gonna say, I will wish that we adjourned.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard, so we are adjourned.
Nice job, everybody.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Madam Chair.